... recorded on Channel 14. Remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting, first notified me as the chair, and I will inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. We'll start with public session, public comment. Please limit your comments to two minutes per individual. There's no debate or action. Taken on public comment items, and the committee may take items under advisement or request to put them on a future agenda.
My name is Becky McCullough. And first of all, I'd like to say the school committee packets are not being posted before meetings, and that would be nice if they were posted before meetings. And then I have to apologize for my comments of the last meeting when I mistakenly thanked you for signing the resolution to the legislature for them to follow the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and I urge you to do now, to do that. I urge the members of the public to become informed on that issue also. Thank you.
Thank you. Other fellow comment? Just state your name.
Emily O'Connell.
So I am... Can you just sit at the... Sorry. Can you sit at the chair so that the mic picks you up for the viewers at home?
Okay. So I'm Emily O'Connell, and I just wanted to put a plug in for the YMCA. So I know there's been some discussion about the YMCA taking over some of the childcare, and I just wanted to speak. I have an 18-month-old who has been at the YMCA, the New North Falmouth Childcare Center, since he was three months old, and I just have nothing but wonderful things to say about it. It has... It's a relatively small center, but it comes with the support and the structure and this training of staff that accompanies any YMCA, and so I feel like it's a little bit the best of both worlds. We get quarterly progress reports on him. We get daily written feedback. But honestly, I think the thing I can say that I like the best about it is just that the... I feel like I can feel 100% confident every day that no matter what kind of a day he's having, I feel like they are competent and capable, and they will take excellent care of him, and it really feels good dropping him off. We use the swimming services at the YMCA in Barnstable. We've been doing that since he was six months old. And again, instructors have been phenomenal. I wish we didn't have to drive to Barnstable for it, but it's totally worth the drive because he loves it. So I just, you know, we've been so happy with it. In addition to being the parent of a happy YMCA attendee, I'm also a local pediatrician here in Falmouth, and so I get feedback on a daily basis about a whole variety of childcare settings, and I can say sort of uniformly from the babies through the, you know, infants, toddlers, up through the preschoolers, without exception, the feedback has been really fantastic. So I know it's a relatively sort of new brooch into the Falmouth area, and so I just wanted to sort of put in a plug and say I've been really pleased and so take that into consideration. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can give the committee just a brief update of where we are with the YMCA. We had held meetings at two elementary schools, and we got some feedback about some unique needs in the community. And right now, we have both Stacy Pugh and myself, we have kind of stepped back, and we're re-looking at bringing the Y into provide before and after care for our kids, and we're in the process. We're still looking at it. We're just stepping back right now because we've got some information that, you know, there's some needs out there that the program as presented would not meet. So I want to dial it back and look at it a little bit more closely.
Thank you. I have a big file. I know. I was gonna say.
Everybody's gonna get sick. Now is the time.
Any other public comment? Do you have anybody else? No. Just... I know. Great. Okay. So we'll have our presentation by the district nurses. Your timing's perfect. Come on down.
Now would be the time if anybody's planning on having a medical issue.
Yeah. Any medical emergencies need to happen before they leave.
What is that?
Oh, come on, you're here. We have Melissa.
It took you a while.
Sorry. Okay. We'll stay focused. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Brey. I'm the school nurse at Mullen Hall. I'm going to do our presentation on behalf of the district nurses on nursing services here in Falmouth Public Schools. Okay, so we are coming before you to kind of give you an idea of what we do day in and day out and in other situations, and to talk about our staffing levels. We did have our nursing program audit by a couple of school nurses from Boston, and they came forward with some recommendations on staffing patterns that we should have here in Falmouth based on enrollment and on acuity of students. So we're advocating for the health needs and safety of the students of the Falmouth Public Schools through adequate and recommended staffing levels in order to provide comprehensive healthcare services. Health issues and social-emotional needs of students are becoming increasingly complex, which I think you've heard a lot this year through the start-time discussions, that wellness is a big part of our town and things that we need to look for. Where can... We've been concerned with some of the staffing patterns as the nurses. We've lost health assistants. We've added nurses, and now we're having trouble finding substitutes. We don't always have coverage. So we were happy to have our program looked at, and we're hoping that the recommendations will be followed through with in the coming years. So this is just looking at the enrollment in each of the schools. The Mass Department of Public Health recommends that there be a full-time nurse in schools of 250 to 500 students. The high school clearly is almost double that and has been working with one RN for a number of years now. So there are approximately 3,500 students. About 3,300 of those have visited us at least one time this year. We've had approximately 31,000 visits to date this year from students, 2,500 students with at least one medical condition reported, and 300 students with prescribed medications. So day in and day out, we do injury care, illness, medications, whether it be a daily oral medication or diabetes treatment, administration of treatments such as diabetic treatment, screenings, we do hearing, vision, postural, height and weight on all students. We take care of the health records, and we do a lot of case management, whether it be with families or with physicians and other agencies. So at first, we looked at all the visits we see, and the number is big, 31,000 visits. We're busy, and everyone understands that, but we thought it would be more helpful to look at the trends over the years. I went back to 2012, and you can see over time, what we do is becoming increasingly complex. We're giving more medications, performing a lot more treatments, doing a lot more case management. We're having to take up more of our time to contact physicians, parents, teachers, so that everyone's on the same page as far as care for students in the schools because everything is much more acute and complex. Every day, we see children with asthma, diabetes, seizures, endocrine disorders, life-threatening allergies, cardiac, gastrointestinal disorders, psychological issues. We have a lot of overflow from the guidance departments that end up maybe sometimes first with us, sometimes second with us. Orthopedic injury and a lot of concussion management. Every day in school, we do plenty of skills that really only a nurse can do: medication administration, G-tube feedings, ostomy care, central line care, wound care, listening to lungs, checking oxygen levels, things that if we're not there, really no one else in the school can do. It's not like if a teacher's out, a TA can come in and sub. If we're not there, there are a lot of things that someone can't just step in and take our position. A lot of record-keeping. This is where our health assistants really come into play. They help us a lot with paperwork, tons of paperwork: physicals, immunizations, following-up on immunizations, especially with a lot of families coming from out of the country. There's a lot of follow-up on that. Physical exam compliance, we have to hunt down a lot of that. Incoming and outgoing students throughout the year. They're coming in, going out, and we have to hunt that down. Concussion reporting, that's especially bigger at the older levels where they have to be in touch with the sports teams and whatnot. State reporting and monthly data reports. On top of taking care of the kids, we're also being asked to be involved with a lot more other aspects. So weekly, we're in IEP 504, instructional support team meetings, crisis team. We try as much as we can to do student and staff education. I know most of us wish we had more time to do so. The older levels are doing the expert assessments, the behavioral health assessments. This year, we've been forming medical emergency teams, so that was an added task that we were kind of put in charge of at each of our schools. Most of us are on our wellness committees. We are now being asked to cover schools after school. If there are students with severe medical conditions such as diabetes, we're being asked to do the after-school coverage as well. Field trip planning, need to make sure the teachers know that the students have certain conditions or, in the case of Morris Pond, possibly go on the seashore trip. And staff visits, we even take care of the staff when needed. We try to decrease the missed classroom time. We want the kids in the class, and we want them healthy, and we want them learning. So we make first-aid kits to try to keep the small issues in the class, meet with teachers beginning of the year and throughout the year as anything changes. Case management with guidance and administration. I know at my school, we do a front-office meeting weekly where we sit down, make a list, and usually the 10 kids I see for the most part are the same 10 kids that administration and guidance are seeing as well. Try with student education on self-care and wellness and keeping the family involved. In the future, we have been charged with focusing on developing the medical response teams, more 504 planning for students in town, more focus on wellness, and the substance abuse screenings are new for the district as well, and those are expanding to more grades next year. So it was proposed by the January Health Services Review that we add a few positions within town, one being a nurse leader. As of right now, we have a nursing coordinator, but they... The review recommended we have an RN to perform our evaluations rather than having a school administrator perform our evaluations. They recommended two full-time RNs at the high school based upon the 500-student recommendation through the state, and that is a regulation that we have not been following. They recommend that we keep an RN at each other's school and that we have two rotating health assistants among the K through eight, so the other six schools. This year, we had one, one health assistant, six schools, five days a week. We all kind of missed out on having some assistant time. And they recommended that we keep a district float nurse. That was kind of a safety net for us this year. We had a district float nurse. She's a full RN, and she was able to fill in, I can actually explain on the next slide, if there were an emergency, if we couldn't find a substitute, which is hard to find as a school nurse, substitutes to come in and fill for us. So the district float was pretty crucial this year, helping in emergency situations, which our department had a lot come up. So we feel that the most current pressing need is to have what we're calling boots on the ground. The last time we were before you, you asked us what we would consider our priorities from the report, and we feel like the second nurse at the high school is recommended and needed for safe and adequate care at the high school, but we also feel the float position was invaluable. Like I said, it provided our safety net for emergencies and extra hands in the office here and there when we had it. We do feel a nurse leader will be an important position when implemented in the future, but our current priority is to, like we said, keep boots on the ground. It's tough. We do a lot of work, and we feel overwhelmed at times, and it would be helpful to have as many bodies as we can in the department. Just one more considerate, a couple more things we were thinking about. We have two retirements this year in the small department and a new RN to be hired at the high school. So that's three new nurses in a department of eight people. New nurses, just as teachers do, go through the mentor program. It's a DESI requirement, and it requires observation visits, which we'll all need sub-coverage for. We're losing a few of our subs because one was hired at T-Ticket. We know one is moving, and our float nurse was hired at North Falmouth, and as of right now, that position's not being filled. So we are looking at going into next year with very low numbers of substitutes, very little coverage, and more responsibility. So at this point, I think Charlie was going to...
Sure. So, actually, I can move the lights on. So we'll slide. So in looking at the recommendations and making some priorities, originally, the plan and what was budgeted was to do the program audit this coming, this next school year. We were able to kind of jump-start that and do it. So in one sense, we're ahead of where we are. And looking then at how best to implement this, what we are basically going to do for September will definitely be to have two full-time RNs at the high school. That... We're in the process now of hiring that second individual. That said, we will also be able to do the two full-time health assistants, which currently we only have one with a part-time person at the high school. But by having that second nurse at the high school, we're able to take that original part-time position, make it full-time, and make that now part of the rotating for the six schools along with our current full-time health assistant. And then, of course, to continue having an RN in each of the schools. So that's what we are basically able to do through the retirement and through some of the reallocation. What then still leaves as a whole for future staffing needs would be the nurse leader and also that floating nurse position. That was, I have to echo, an invaluable position. That was a one-year position that we were able to kind of muster to do for this year, and part of our problem is, as you heard, a lack of substitute nurses. And it's a Cape-wide issue. Our compensation is as competitive, if not more, than other districts on the Cape, and there still is simply a shortage. And it is a critical area given that, as you heard, one of them are moving, another individual is becoming one of our full-time employees, so it is a concern. The other non-staffing recommendations that the audit brought about are things that we definitely will be able to implement for September. That was to update the nurse's job description. Secondly, the yearly presentation to the school committee, which you have just had. And also the establishment of what is a 30 to 45-minute, what they call in the program review, end-of-day office slash professional time. Not that emergencies for students wouldn't be handled, but it is a period of time where the nurse can kind of close the door, make phone calls, confidential phone calls, paperwork, kind of that prep time that a teacher has, yet so often nurses do not have. And what can, as I know, with many of our nurses, keep them at the school till 5:30, 6 o'clock at night with paperwork that has to be done. So to be able to kind of carve out some time, again, always responding to emergencies, but being able to still have carved-out and well-known established protocol of a professional office period of time. And then finally, to review the roles and duties of our school physician and what that job description should look like within the world that we live in with healthcare and the needs that we're seeing here in the district. So the staffing, again, will become those two areas of the floating nurse and the nurse leader will become, at least through my department, budget priorities that I'll be bringing forth at budget time for the next fiscal year. And meanwhile, we are going to continue to brainstorm how best to meet the needs regarding the substitute issue and coverage. And happy to say we are now able to at least implement the two nurses at the high school, which was a compliance issue with medication delegation with the state and the two health assistants for the district, along with the non-staffing recommendations all in place for September.
Charlie, off the top of your head, do you know how many students we have right now with feeding tubes?
With feeding tubes, I would defer to our nurses.
I have a student with feeding tube, but is not getting feedings at this time.
Okay. Is there another one? And how about students in need of ostomy care?
Hi, everyone. How's everybody doing?
Okay. Thank you.
I would say this too. I think we would agree, we are seeing some significant diabetic needs, and particularly at our elementary schools, more than in past years. And I mean significant.
And I think the other piece that the nursing staff is really involved in is the mental health of our kids, and I think that the impact on our nursing staff has gone from, you know, zero to 100 over the past couple of years, and we really need to take another look at that.
Questions for our nurses?
Yeah. Kind of thinking big picture with this. I know it's hard to get substitutes, and I actually know this from the other side of trying to hire nurses, how difficult that is. Now, in filling positions, is that also hard? Is it... Is it hard? Because now, seeing how the nursing field has changed and all of these, all of the pieces of your daily job, I just think about how much work it is, and to get people who are really invested in that and who want to be running around nonstop and doing all of this, you know, it's hard. And I know teaching is going that way too, so we're, you know, in those issues, but is that also a challenge? Are there less nurses out there, school nurses out there?
Yeah. Our... Some of our folk here were involved in the hiring process that we went through. Were there applications? Yes. Were there an abundance of applications? No. And were they all stellar applications? No.
So I have a follow-up to this. So in thinking kind of grassroots and how we promote more nursing within our community, what's happening at the high school to go into the nursing field? Are there courses available for students at the high school who might be interested in going into nursing?
I would defer to our principal.
There's been some interest in internships. I know it's...
Yes, we have a work... We have a hospital. We don't have specific courses at the high school, but we have finance and accounting and business teacher who has developed a great partnership with Falmouth Hospital and area physicians, and students go and they shadow. They can shadow anyone from nursing to a cafeteria employee to maintenance to physicians. So yes, but we don't have a specific course, but we do have an internship program.
Okay. Just thinking that maybe the future...
It really isn't a nursing shortage. There's a school nursing, school nursing, totally different.
Yeah.
Issue.
Right.
It's really, really tough for a new grad to come into a school nursing position because you're in the school by yourself. There's no backup. Even in this system right now, like, we're all worried about the fall, trying to mentor people because you barely have time to get through your own stuff for the day, and you have to then really support, especially in the beginning, the new nurses who need to know everything. Some of them don't know SNAP, that's our charting system, there's a couple different ones, so that takes a lot of time just to chart everything because you're not familiar where everything is. So that part is the school... There's actually, you know, my daughter went to Villanova, she... All of her friends were nurses. Five of them didn't get jobs for almost a year, and all nurses, but... So there's plenty of nurses out there, and they just try to get them to come here as a...
And the other piece of the shortage of school nurses is that in order to be a school nurse, you have to pass the MTEL test that the teachers do, and it's a difficult test. I took it, you know, decades after having grammar and things like that. So then, is it consideration for nurse, like, to be a school nurse?
Yeah, we have to make two licenses.
Right. I need your licenses.
I have lots to say, so if there's anybody else, she's probably going to be quicker than I am.
I was just wondering, with a lack of substitutes and this potential lack for next year, what happens if we cannot find a replacement? What happens to, particularly some of these critical care things, when there isn't someone to step in?
We go to school.
I'd like to sweep through that because I'm the nurse at the high school, right? And, you know, I think it's great that we have the second nurse designated. However, on those days, when there is no coverage out of school, it's just about guaranteed that nurse goes. So I don't really know, and, you know, with our concerns for staffing for next year, I mean, I see that happening a lot. I really do. And I, you know, that does concern me. It concerns all of us as a group because that's going to be the bottom line, wouldn't you say, Nancy? I mean, we have to provide that coverage.
Plus, Sue is losing her full-time health assistant, so we're down one full-time wonderful health assistant.
Well, she's not even in full-time. She's just been 25 to 30 hours nursing. So, you know, in addition to orienting a new nurse, I'll be orienting a new health assistant if I do get a health assistant, but then we're going to be like pulling people and, you know, just shuffling the deck, you know? That's what we see, and that's why all of us really feel if we can get that float position along with the second nurse at the high school, I mean, it's kind of, you know, for us, it's a no-brainer. I mean, with the lack of substitutes, we don't really have any choice. So I just... I'm just afraid that the second nurse at the high school really will not be the second nurse at the high school. She'll be the float nurse. So I want to add, I'm co-lead the district float nurses here that was hired, and coming into the position, I was... It was, you know, a little frightening to hear. A lot of these nurses that are in the school system now never took sick days before I came. They'd kind of with the flu, with stomach issues, broken bones, newly broken bones, whatever, and because they couldn't find coverage. That was alleviated, I believe, somewhat this year by me, but, you know, that's a scary thing. A sick nurse should not be taking care of children, and, you know, it's just not an ideal situation. And, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, the union encourages us, just go on stuff online, say you're not coming in. Don't show up. That's the only way it's going to get solved, and that's not our nature. We can't do that. We can't abandon students. We can't abandon the health issues, and it's just not something that I think most of us or any of us would consider doing. And if it were to happen and there is a crisis, you know, I fear to think that what's going to, you know, bring about the change the most is if something really horrible happens, and, you know, that... We don't want that. But, you know, overall, I think it's, you know, just... It's definite need, and the subs just don't happen, and when they do happen, they're very sporadic. The ones that, you know, most of the ones that we have are here and there. They're not consistent people you can count on, so...
John?
Well, first off, congratulations on your new position also. Charles, you know what you said about the type 2, the significant increase in type 2 diabetes, obviously that concerns me. I mean, it's an overall societal issue too as well. Are there any programs in place, like edu... I'm assuming it's mostly type 2. If I'm... I would imagine so.
Type 1.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
In school, each children?
Okay. Thanks, Mr....
Yeah, we have a variety of students who actually have pumps.
The statistics are that every diabetic student takes up, I believe, one hour per day of the school nurse's time in care of that one student.
I think it's one.
I think, yeah.
It really does.
Sometimes they'll come in with a blood sugar that's dangerously low, and sometimes, you know, a few more points, they can go into a coma. So you can't have, you know, the nurse say, oh, you know, I can't come in, I've got the flu, because who can... There's no one else trained, as Alicia said, to assess those situations. There are emergency patients.
And the kids are all in tune with monitoring their levels and all that?
Two. They don't... A lot of it isn't at the elementary level. You were four years...
I'm sorry to educate them. You know, they don't feel...
You know, they don't feel, I had a student last week came in at, to be checked, 27 is blood sugar wise. And he had no feelings. He was fine, no problems. And that's really a scary thing to have happen. And the teachers saw nothing either. So it, diabetes is very dangerous.
Melissa, you ready?
I'm ready.
Play it on us.
So just to clarify on the diabetes type two, yes, society, societal, it is on the rise. But the diabetes type one is extremely dangerous. These children, as you heard, don't feel, they're completely asymptomatic. Oftentimes, it's not discovered until it's, something has dreadfully gone wrong. And while they are being taught how to monitor their own sugars as they progress, because this is a chronic condition that they will have until we find a cure for it. They're, they're kids and they're still volatile and they're little. So, and that's why we're here as nurses. So a couple of things. Looking at my prior notes from the April meeting, thank you for listening to the nurses and thank you for putting ahead the two full-time RNs, hopefully at the high school, and the full-time health assistant with the part-time at the high, at the part-time at the high school. And to continue to have one RN at each school. I fear, as Sue Bozak does, of the whole, because we don't have a float RN. And, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Pam.
Pam. I echo Pam that it's not in a nurse's nature to let a school go without or to know, you know, the union is great for some things, but that's not the way that you are a nurse in your heart by just going online and saying, I'm not going to be there tomorrow. When you look at these faces every day and the parents trust you to take care of their little people. And it's not like the parents know if the nurse isn't going to be there, that they could just keep their child home that day. Well, I think you're, you know, I, I have confidence that you're going to go to school today, you know, Nurse Bozak is there and she's going to help you through the day. Oh, she's not there today. Now that child's panicked, parent's upset. Anyway, just two cents on that. But thank you for listening to them. So getting back to the job recommend, the job descriptions, will this school, is the school physician going to be a contracted position?
Well, currently, our school physician is not under a contract. Has been with us for, I mean, pre-me, so I'm not sure how long. It's more of, although at one time would have been appointed back in the day and still becomes an appointed position, we are not under a contract. It's more of a year-to-year agreement.
Okay.
That pretty much has just been a verbal agreement each year. Aside from whenever that original appointment was back in the day.
So thank you for pushing through with that job description. Will the new job description, will that include having the word pediatrician in there? Or will it be general practice or family medicine?
Sure. I would say this, most school physicians tend to be pediatricians and/or family practitioners. I think it certainly makes sense that those who are consulting with schools have knowledge background and practice with children. If you look at the state advisories around school physicians, they really do kind of single out that there is expertise around children and adolescents.
Okay. What are we doing to improve our mental health needs for our children? Because it's not just the diabetes that's on the rise. We all know and we read the paper that the mental health needs are ridiculously on the rise. We can't get ahead of it. What are we doing? We're providing these children with needs. We're giving them enough food to eat for the day, we're giving them a safe place, we're, you know, covering them in many different ways. What are we doing to help with our, the increase in the mental health needs for these children?
I would say that the district 100% is aware, and all my colleagues around this table through the leadership of Nancy, are fully aware that we need to address this on so many levels. I mean, I will say this, and more details will be coming out, but we are beginning a partnership with McLean Hospital, with a clinical psychiatrist, child psychiatrist and psychologist who are working with us. I think more details of that will be coming out and we'll be kind of presenting that. And we're in a lot of planning stages right now. However, we need to, first of all, address it in terms of our professional development with our district staff in recognizing the profile of students that we now see and the type of needs that they are coming with to better understand that in order to better help them. Along with looking at the services that we need to have in place based on the levels of need that we see. So it is an active discussion. We have an agreement that we're working out with McLean to better support us in a real hands-on way too. And it is a focus, and I think Nancy would agree with this. It is a focus for next year.
I am excited to hear that there's a McLean clinical psychologist on board.
And a psychiatrist.
And a psychiatrist. I'm excited to, that makes me feel better about covering the whole student as we've talked about through different subjects.
And, and can I just add one point that, that they actually are the clinical directors of the child and adolescent anxiety and depression outpatient clinic.
So this really sounds like a really good program moving forward. I'm excited to hear about that.
It's very exciting. I think the other piece is, I just want to remind the committee that both health aides were cut a couple of years ago. We were able to bring one back. We were able to, this year, without budgeting it, which was very difficult to do, put in a float nurse. The issue is to build it into our budget, the actual operating budget moving forward, not only for the, the medical department, but to couple that with more clinical services. Because I think that the more social workers are needed to be working with the additional nurses also to then go at some of these issues from the social work perspective as well as the medical. Because I think if we don't do both, we're, we're, we're not treating the whole child.
Right.
More and more of sort of the clinical social work is being, you know, pushed over.
To nurses.
Yep.
You are in a class.
I have, I think, a question for Patrick, actually. So I'm curious about what the difference would be between the amount we pay for subs over the course of a year, sub nurses, and what a float RN would cost. And I don't expect you would actually know that number off the top of your head, but it would be a number that I'd be very curious to see what that difference is that we're trying to, because if we had a float nurse, it would potentially solve a big chunk of our sub problem, right?
And we did look at that last year. I think part of the issue is you have to look at the benefit piece also.
Oh, right.
Right. So you can't just look at what is your sub budget look like and what is your real salary with benefits look like. And that's why this year, we did a substitute float nurse. It was the only possible way that I could do it. So we did go through all, a lot of machinations about how can we pull from here to support here. And so we did look at that. But again, that's what, in building the budget for the next round, it has to be part in of the operating budget.
Okay, last question. I'm just wondering about the role of the school physician and how that, how that role interacts with the nursing responsibilities and what that looks like.
Basically, we just get a set of orders from her at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
I haven't really had much other interaction.
She does, she attends our department meetings once a month with us?
Yeah, she does do that.
And she is there for, we can reach out if we did have a clinical question come up, but I, I personally haven't.
Usually you contact the child's phone doctor when something comes up that you need to.
But she does sign off on our orders for any standing medications that we give. Just as like in a hospital, a doctor would write the orders and on the floor, we would follow through with those. She kind of is our.
So that's the primary role, pretty much?
Well, it, it's what it has currently been used as. If you really look at the different job descriptions and templates given by the state, there's a lot more that the actual role could be as a true resource to the district.
With more collaboration.
Exactly. And within the whole health and wellness picture.
I've had two occasions where she's come to staff members that have been hurt. You know, while paying, she's come over to the school to check them out, give them advice. That's a total twice that I've done that. But she woke up.
And I just want to echo on, what's your first name?
Donna.
Donna. I just want to echo that it's not just the children that the nurses are seeing, they're also seeing staff. So I just want to, I know that the children were in their slides, how many visits that they had, but they don't put the staff in the SNAP, so they're not going to get the same statistics.
I was at Lawrence today and I had the worst headache, so where do I go? Right for the nurses' office.
I was lucky enough to have a sub today.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
So informative.
All you did.
We're just so appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our guidance presentation.
Good evening, I'm Alan Kazarian, I'm the guidance director, grades five through 12 for the district. I've been in the district, this is my, finishing my 10th year. And I work with a, with a great staff of counselors at all the different grade levels who, all of, all except one have been here as long or longer than myself. So I feel like we have a veteran group, we work very, very hard. And I'm very proud of the many programs that we offer and our effort to work with each student within the district. Of course, we're not without challenges, but I know onward we go as we face each day and each year as we come along. We're constantly meeting, we're constantly reviewing, we're constantly evaluating, we're constantly looking at new ways to improve our services. In your packet, I'm just going to refer to the information that I previously sent to you. You're going to see a table or a grid, whatever you call it, of, of different services. And I'm just going to, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm going to pinpoint one or two highlights from each group. Obviously, in the guidance department, our primary goal is to work with students. Our task is to meet individually with all students at all grade levels. Counselors at the end of the year are required to submit dates of meetings that they have with students and so forth. They give that information to myself. And they're also involved in a myriad of meetings from personal counseling, crisis counseling, it may be scheduling, it's just day-to-day events that may occur. And obviously, at different grade levels, there are different needs, there are different events that might occur. One of the things I highlighted under students are also different programs that we offered. In your packet, you're going to see a list of leadership programs. These are at the high, these are high school-based programs where students can apply and where they go out into the community and they may be funded by community partners and so forth to attend different types of event. Our guidance department also funds at the high school level a Naviance program that we use for college and career planning. So every student at Falmouth High School has an account. We meet with students individually regarding that. We meet with them in groups regarding different types of career and college planning activities as well. At the junior high level, we have the MAST CIS program. It's a free program put out by the state of Massachusetts Career Interest Surveys, which help to look at programs and do career interest inventories with students at that level. Probably one of the biggest programs that we've worked to refine is the next grouping is transitions. Given, and this came back when I first came into the district, there was a big fear about all the movement of kids and we looked at, I didn't look at, but before I came, they looked at moving counselors with students and so forth. And then we tried that for a few years. And then we went back to the old model of building teams within schools. And so then we focused on, right, how can we make the transitions of students from grade level to grade level, or school to school rather, more positive. So I feel like we've done a lot, a lot of work in that area. I'm just going to give you a quick synopsis. Students from grades four to five, we meet with counselor teams from each group, from each school rather, special education administrators and so forth, come to Morse Pond School and they meet with, with our team of counselors and administrators to review student needs and to look at student programs. In addition, students will come from grades four, from all the four different schools, and they're going to tour and visit Morse Pond School, which is actually happening the end of this week. From grades six to seven, we have a number of programs going on at Lawrence. So we start in November. We have an open house at Lawrence School for families to come in. In February, the guidance counselors, including myself, which, this is a great experience, we go to all the sixth grade classrooms and we meet with sixth grade classes talking about going to Lawrence, moving up to Lawrence, picking classes, what it's like to go to Lawrence and so forth. We bring students with us from Lawrence and they're the best salespeople for, for transitioning. We have a curriculum night in March. And then we recently had grade six tours where we had the sixth graders come up in buses and tour Lawrence School. So there's a progression of events, again, at Lawrence that's occurred throughout the year. And then that culminates with a team meeting with Lawrence com, I'm sorry, Morse Pond counselors coming up to meet with the Lawrence team that I coordinate as well. And we sit down and we talk about students, we talk about programs and needs that we have and how to best service them. In addition, from grade eight to grade nine, we have a significant amount of programs, beginning with, we have a recruiting process, which is kind of fun. I bring over ninth graders to Lawrence School. This will be in, the end of November, beginning of December, to promote Falmouth High School, to build up interest for our open house, which is held in usually this first or second Tuesday of December. And then families and students will come for a tour and they'll come for information session. Then we have a parent night in January. Then all the high school guidance counselors go over to Lawrence School and we bring students with us as well. We do a similar performance where we talk with students about coming to Falmouth High School, about picking classes. We actually bring course selection sheets, we talk about electives and so forth. Then in April, we have an opportunity for students to come up to the high school. We have a pretty, a pretty rigorous program of touring the high school and listening to different speakers and so forth, all within a relatively short period of time. But that's been very successful as well. And then we have an orientation period in August where the students will come up and they will go through their classes, they will meet their teachers and have a sense. So I think the comfort level of students moving around between schools grows and there's a continuous, so it's not just a one-shot deal, but it's a continuous movement. And there's also constant communication between schools as well regarding, again, student programs, student needs and so forth. From the high school level often to college, I mean, obviously that's our main focus, is to help with all students regarding career and some kind of college or some kind of educational planning. We worked for four years with the students at Falmouth High School to ensure that they would have some kind of plan as they move ahead or as they graduate from Falmouth High School. And in your packet, a couple of pages in, the statistics from the graduating class of 2017. We're very proud of the educational aspirations for the students for this class. We're very proud of the scholarship dollars that were earned. We're very, very, very proud of the community of Falmouth and and the donations and all the contributors that have given over $400,000 in scholarship dollars to these students to attend various types of colleges and programs. So that's very exciting for us. And leading up to that, also in the senior year, we've offered three trips to colleges. So we offer a bus trip to UMass Dartmouth, we offer a bus trip to Bridgewater State University. And then we have a program with Cape Cod Community College that we bring, we bus the students to the college who are planning to enroll to take the occupancy test, tour the college and pick their classes. So for different levels of students, for different needs of students, we're trying to provide different types of services to help get students connected to, to plans after high school. Also, under the, under the student, under the transitions page, you're going to see testing programs. We're a very active test center for SAT, ACT and so forth. But kind of interesting are the PSAT testing. So, and I just want to share with you some of the numbers around this grouping. We have two grades that take PSATs at Falmouth High School. The grade 11 students are optional. This year, we had 116 students, the grade 11 class, take the PSAT. Their mean scores were 98 points over the state of Massachusetts average. Their, their mean score was 99 points above the national average. All right, so that was our Falmouth High School juniors, 116. Now, for the sophomore class, we pay for Falmouth High School sophomores, all sophomores, to have an opportunity to take a PSAT test. I talk with them, we prep them, the teachers work with them and so forth to go over material. We give it in the field house. Nancy Taylor comes over and helps with the setup. She's a great resource for us. And we do a great job with that. So this year, we had 175 students take the PSAT 10. Those scores are amazing as well. They scored 56 points above the state of Massachusetts for the 10th graders. And they scored 75 points above the national average. All right, so we feel like our students are probably maybe, I don't know, over test. All right, so, we feel like our students are probably maybe, I don't know, overtested, or maybe they become in test wise, but they do very, very well. And we feel they're very prepared, through the English department, through the math departments, which, which are the main subject areas for most of these types of testing programs. Moving ahead, looking at some of the school-wide programs, we like to expose our students to a variety of activities. We have a career day at Falmouth High School for all junior students. We sent the entire junior class to over 30 career sites in the Falmouth community, that's an amazing day, and it's an amazing adventure to pull off, I'll be honest with you. We work closely with the VIPS office, we work closely, Janet Roach is also involved with, is helping us as well. But making the contacts in the community is huge, you know what? And we're so proud that over the years, that we've made so many contacts with the businesses, and we're so grateful for their, for their welcoming our students into the businesses and so forth. In the same light, we've had businesses come to Lawrence School, where we do a career fair, and go on an every other year basis, just because of timing and because of needs and so forth. But this, we had, last year, we had 60, over 60 career participants in our career fair. In addition, our college at Falmouth High School grew this year to be over 140 participants. We started out our first year, we had barely 100, the second year, we had about 120, and we grew to 148 this year. So, I talked to Mary Gans, and we decided to open it up to all students, at first it was just juniors and seniors, we opened it up to all students at Falmouth High School. And the guidance counselors did work to help prepare, especially the younger students, what to expect at a college fair, and how to go, and I mean, we have so many pictures and videos and so forth of the, of the interactions with our students, with these adults, and having conversations, and talking about careers, and just getting information and gathering information, it's just been a very, very positive event. Another big deal, under school-wide events, you'll see coordination team meetings. I'm very proud of the fact that we have been able to create a very, very collegial environment and collaborative environment between guidance department and the school administrators at each school level. So we have weekly coordination meetings. At Morse Pond, we have them on Monday mornings, at Falmouth High School, they're on Thursday mornings, and at Lawrence School, they're on Friday mornings. And all three principals, Tom, Tim and Mary, have been outstanding to work with, they're extremely supportive of all of our programs. And when we meet at these coordination review meetings, we talk about concerns, we talk about student concerns, we talk about student programs, we talk about guidance programs, we talk about improvements, we talk about evaluations. So there are a variety of topics, and faithfully, we bring together, the nurses are included as well, the psychologists, the adjustment counselors, and all the administrators, principal and assistants as well. And together, we come together, and these, these have been a great task, we've done these for several years now, and I think it's been a, it's been a huge win-win, not only for the district, but for the students. Outspurned out of that has been a medical review team, which we created this year at Falmouth High School. And that came out of a strong need. I'd like to you to look at the graph that I put in your, hopefully you have a graph. It's a document of, students with documented medical conditions requiring educational services. Is it in color?
Yes.
Beautiful. So, last year, we, the blue bars were the students, where we didn't really, they started to grow in numbers in regards to hospitalizations, in-school and out-of-school tutoring and so forth. So it grew to 39 students last year, and it became overwhelming, excuse me, from a guidance perspective, from the counselors to manage, myself as well, and from the administrators. Looking at the red, this year, I said, we could have put together some, more of a support system in place, to help students, to work with families, to come up with plans, to make sure the families and the parents who are going through this understood processes and procedures, and how to get assistance for their students, how to get, excuse me, educational assistance and academic support. So, looking at the red bars, you're going to notice, this year, an increased spike in hospitalizations. So throughout this, just this school year, we've had 25 partial hospitalizations of students. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, can you speak to the reason for the hospitalizations?
I'm not sure of that. No, if you look at last year, the blue bar, you're going to see partial school day spike. So last year, we had a lot of students who were just out of school. For some reason, this year, they're at McLean, we've had significant numbers of students, upwards of close to 20, just at McLean, and it became almost like a Falmouth spinoff center.
And it ties into the nurses' presentation, that you, from another perspective, are seeing a real increase, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly?
Yep, yep.
In mental health issues in high school kids.
So the mental health issues are all around, mostly around depression, anxiety, significant numbers of eating disorders have also creeped up as well. But it's mostly depression and anxiety, and kids will go from anywhere from two, two weeks, maybe three weeks or more. Now, the interesting feature, what we have to do is to add the bars together with the red, so now the partial hospitalization included 25 students, the partial day students were eight, the partial in-school support students were eight, so total of 41 students, and that's nearly 5% of our students needed some type of educational support during this school year. So suddenly, now, if students in hospitalization, they come out of hospitalization, what do you do with them? They've missed three or four weeks of school. So now, it's been the counselors, it's been our coordination team, but now, in addition, this medical review team, which will be the same, same grouping of colleagues, are trying to brainstorm how to best service these students, and how to help them catch up with their work, and try, hopefully try to send them back to class. I mean, it's, it's a disaster to try to expect to come out of a hospitalization for long term, and go immediately back to class and catch up on your work, you're constantly behind. And then we found kids were unable to maintain themselves, and we're having relapses and going backwards. You know what I mean? So, this is growing, and it's not just Falmouth High School, all right? So these are, these are Capewide, they're statewide, they're nationwide, and all schools are looking at programs, all right? And we're looking at programs, and Mary will go into that a little further, but we're trying, we're working with teams, we're getting, we're collaborating, we're getting ideas on how to manage and how to help our students become, and I believe we're in the right, like, we're taking steps in the right directions to work with those students as well.
Can I ask something on that topic?
Please.
Are we not regulated to provide tutors? And is that in, from, what budget is that?
Oh, we, we...
When kids are out for...
It's a touchy subject. There is a, there is a, there's significant tutoring that takes place both in school...
We have a home hospital budget, so that when students are declared unable to attend school, yes, we do have to provide tutoring.
Students have, students are required to, or physicians are required to fill out a home hospital tutoring form, so that's a trigger. So, if you have, if you're just a medical student with, maybe you've broken a leg or something like that, and you're out of school for a certain amount of time, you just get a physician form. If you have a mental health component to your, to your health challenge, then you need to have a therapist or a psychiatrist as well. So we would get both documents, they would go to the Student Services Office for approval, and then that would be the trigger to set up a tutoring system. So now, my point is, so, going back to last year, we had significant numbers of out-of-school tutoring, all right? So our goal was to, this year, try to move it in-school, and to try to provide tutoring as well. It just exploded on us again, you know what I mean? So every student who was in a hospital automatically triggered a home hospital form, which was sent to Student Services by Education, Inc., which is usually the, the service provider. The guidance person would get the work, send it to the hospital and so forth, then we have to monitor that, and then, so now we have to bring that student back, and again, they're not always prepared to go back right into the club. But yes, there is a budget, there is a home hospital procedure.
Sure. We have one more question.
Yep.
I'm wondering, do you know what the numbers were the year before?
The previous, I didn't put them in, but I have, they were, they were significantly lower, I'll be honest with you, I don't have them, the exact numbers with me, but I can get them.
Yeah, I think that would be great to look at, because, you know, with the three years, we can really see this trend, and then, thinking about that budget line of how much we need to increase that, would be great, to see that.
I'll be honest with you, it's in the 20s.
Along the same lines, I would love to know what these numbers look like, not just at the high school, because I would guess that we start seeing these trends at Lawrence.
All right, well, I'm going to tell you. Last year, yeah, last year, we had zero tutoring requests out of Lawrence School, okay? This year, we've had about, close to 10. All right, so that's starting to show up there. Now, Morse Pond, we've had, I don't know, Tim, maybe, what, five or six?
Six or seven.
Okay. So they're starting to creep up now at the lower levels as well. We're going to have to look at providing a medical review team now at Lawrence School as well, and possibly at Morse Pond. So you can see, you can see the progression.
I think we've had a spike in hospitalizations at Morse Pond this year.
Yeah. Just to, before the principals yell at me. The parents, under parent programs, we've had significant evening events for parents throughout the year at all different grade levels. We started a breakfast program for parents at Lawrence School, it's an initial year, but we maintain continuous contact with parents through connected messages, through, we have a remind program at the high school, we have newsletters that go out at all the different grade levels. And then, I have to give a shout-out for the community part, for our college mentoring program, which is huge, all right? And a special thanks to Jack Zoski, he may have heard about his big award that he recently received from the Myra Kraft Foundation, through the VIPS program, and he was buddy buddy now with Tom Brady and Gronk and so forth, and Robert Kraft, and he has pictures all over the place, so, a true Giants fan. We're kind of melting him a little bit, and he's, I can't go too far of the Doc side, but a little bit. But through his program, as a volunteer, he has brought in nearly 20 community members now, who have been trained by Jack, now part of the college mentoring program. And these mentors are working with students on free and reduced lunch, who may have never had the opportunity to realize a four-year college education. And we are just thrilled with the results of this program. We are thrilled with that nearly over a dozen or so students from the last two classes or so, are now moving on to prestigious colleges, they probably would have never thought of before, all right? And the goal is, under Jack's program, that you would never have a loan of more than $10,000 per year. And he does an amazing job of research, he does an amazing job of helping the students finance this education, and then he does an amazing job working with the mentors to take these students out on trips, and to take them almost as a surrogate parent, to visit colleges, to visit programs, and to help, and then they work together as a team, the parent with the mentor, with, with Jack, and they're constantly meeting in guidance, they're coming at night, they're coming all hours of the day, so we're very proud of that as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Walter? First of all, very impressive. So, I know when I was going through, up through high school, the guidance you got was, if you don't behave, you don't get promoted. In high school, if you don't get good grades, you'll be a failure. But I had a lot of experience training and evaluating, developing leaders in the military and leaders in business, and I was wondering, in your leadership program, do you have a basic fundamental format you follow? In other words, there are four basic principle things we always taught in both areas of leadership, I didn't know if you had one or not.
You're talking about leadership, the programs that we send our students to?
Yeah, well, I'm saying, leadership, there's four basic things you have to do. Do you use that same format?
Tell me again.
Plan, organize, lead, control.
All right, planning all the time, meeting with students, we have homeroom meetings constantly, where we're talking with students, we have small group guidance seminars, where we're meeting with students to plan, to organize, is the other one you said?
Well, I'm talking about when you teach them how to lead. In other words, if you're going to do something, you have to have a plan on what you want to accomplish.
Okay.
You have to organize the people you're leading. You have to lead them in that process, in the control part, and you have to make corrections as you go. And I've found that works in almost every experience I've ever had, so that was the fundamental format that...
Well, we're also working with students to help build, I mean, our primary basis with students is self-esteem and self-confidence, all right?
That's important.
So out of that, all of these other things will branch off. So the guidance position is to help bolster and improve these students' own self-worth, own self-value, you know, and then expose them to programs, all right? And then prepare them to enter those programs. So, mock interviews, all right? Helping with student, applying, writing essays, applying to colleges, applying to different types of programs, applying to, you know what I mean, being part of that.
Well, your program's very thorough. My only point is, that those are the four basics of leadership, and you can teach kids that at a very young age, and you give them experiences, they're not playing what you're going to do.
Yep.
Organize the people you're leading, lead them in the process, and make corrections as you go. And I think those four fundamentals still hold true, so I would just pass that on to you, if you're not using that. And that's something that, once you explain it to them, they can all understand, and all use, and that's what good leaders do.
Other questions? Yeah. In your, about the graduating class, the, I was just confused about what this total education, the total number, the total percentage at the end is, the 89.5%?
That's making four-year college, two-year college, one-year programs, technical schools.
So that's not the graduation rate?
No.
Okay. So that was...
No, that's the percent.
Yes, I was, I was scared.
No, 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 oh, no, no, no. That's the percent of the class via, that are going on into some form of education.
Some form of education. So when it's undecided, it's that they want to go into education...
They might postpone it, they're not sure what they're going to do, they're going to work a while, figure it out.
Okay. John?
I actually have four components that I've been able to personally witness, for what you had mentioned about the...
Okay, I appreciate it.
One student, one child went through the PSAT program this year.
Oh, yeah.
A great job with that. Another child that just is in the midst of doing the Morse Pond transition orientation, great job with that, you enjoyed that visit. And then, another child who's actually in the high school transition from Lawrence.
Okay.
And then I was, Tom was kind enough to welcome me to see the presentation, as a non-parent, just kind of witnessing, there's a fly in the wall, the Morse Pond kids coming in, and seeing that transition of the, and, you know, kudos on all of four of those fronts, so, great job.
And that goes to Walter, I mean, helping prepare these men, these students to be leaders as far as tour leaders, tour guides, being communicators, coming into classrooms, so yes, we are working with that group.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm monopolizing this question. I'm wondering about K-4. So, you're the director for 512. So, how does that, how does, how do K-4...
K-4 have adjustment counselors, they have amazing adjustment counselors, they have one at each school, they've been there as long as I've been here as well.
So, do you guys all come together, is there a...
We have professional development days together, yeah.
Okay. But they meet for transitions.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, oh, yeah.
The adjustment counselors from each elementary school meet with the receiving school, which would be Morse Pond, to help kids transition.
And then I, and then, I'm sorry, I meet with all the adjustment counselors K through 12 quarterly as well.
Oh, that was my question. So I guess my, my question is, why isn't it a K-12 position for director position?
Well, we don't have guidance counselors at K...
Oh, because it's only adjustment.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different counseling venue. I mean, we could, but...
Give me more to do. Make these extra supporters. It is something to think about. I also credit Alan Kazarian, because he has really aligned, even though technically you're 5 through 12, you have aligned with the elementary schools to make sure that, that their transitions and that they're having conversations about what the elementary school adjustment counselors are seeing in kids. So, but I agree with you, that, you know, that might be something we want to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're amazing. So nice to have both of those presentations back to us, because we're so connected. So we're going to move on to our end of the year school improvement plan updates. Who's on the hot seat first?
I think Mr. Blotman.
Mr. Blotman? I didn't know if we were going in order.
Good evening.
Hi, thanks for coming.
So I have my notes in front of me, we can, we can wait or we can start.
We have them, so go for it.
Great things happening at Morse Pond right now, I'm really happy to report on the progress that we set from September. I feel very strongly about all three goals, and I feel very strongly about the progress we've made on them. Goal one, continued realignment of science curriculum to mass science and technology engineering standards, and enrichment of learning opportunities for all students. So there's several components of this. The first was the rollout of the revamped Seashore program that I spoke to last spring. I'm happy to report that parent feedback, student feedback, staff feedback has been fantastic. I had two different parents tell me this spring that their kids were asleep before the car had left the Morse Pond parking lot, when the bus got back. Kids seem really happy with some of the evening activities now. The staff seems happy, having more options. I'm happy to report, I don't have specific data just yet because we're putting it together, but we definitely have a decrease in the number of kids not going to Seashore this year. And we did ask some more pointed questions about why kids weren't in need appeared to be much less of an issue than it was in previous years. We will continue to work on components of this, having Deb Cullum, the president of Falmouth STEM Boosters, come into each class and talk about her book, and have the kids do activities around that book. We're going to look to continue to develop that. She's actually going to enlist help from the kids going forward in doing a second edition of her book. And so their Seashore work will help inform that. Secured funding for the updated science labs, and I want to thank the district administration for that. I put together a proposal with Mr. Waterker's assistance that identified two spaces in the school and the needs that we would have to have functioning, state-of-the-art science rooms that were appropriate for the age of our kids. And the district was able to secure the funding through our school choice funds. We are currently in the process of ordering furniture and supplies. We have a maintenance plan put together for work to be done on the rooms this summer. And actually, let me back up, I also want to thank Ms. Tugus for her, for her help in securing touchscreen technology for the, for the science rooms as well. We could not have done this without her help as well. The, the work on the rooms will be completed by the end of the summer. We're going to have PD for the staff when they come back, and we're, I'm, I'm very excited to be able to tell you all in the fall about the very modern, very state-of-the-art and very relevant for our kids, science rooms that we're going to have in Morse Pond. Continued PD to allow teachers to align their standards with the Discovery Ed textbook. That speaks for itself. We brought in Discovery Ed as part of our contract with them is that they include PD that's relative to state standards and their software with our staff. We did a session in the fall, and Mr. Waterker are going to look for opportunities going forward to make sure that our staff are aligning what they're teaching with the state standards. And then working with the Lawrence School Science Department head to align standards and ensure vertical alignment between the students in grades six to eight. That's one of the tricky things about Morse Pond is that we have two different sets of standards that we follow. Fifth grade follows elementary standards and sixth grade follows six through eight standards. So not only are we aligning ourselves with the Lawrence for one set of standards, we're also inheriting kids from the lower elementary levels that have an entirely different set. There's a lot of transition there. Ms. Brothers was excellent, very helpful coming down for several meetings at our school this year and helping us decide which standards were Morse Pond appropriate, which ones were Lawrence appropriate, how the time would be divided up, and what was fair for our kids to expect from each of those three years. And I look forward to continuing to work with her in that area. Goal two, work to identify, plan for, and build connections with high-need students to increase their accessibility, performance, and well-being. So mid-year, the school put together a high-needs, high-needs committee to examine best practices in programming for high-needs groups. And I was very proud of the group that I got that volunteered their time for this. It was a wonderful cross-section of administrators, nurse, adjustment counselors, guidance, teachers, speech, special education, ELL, basically voices from all the areas in the school where our kids, that our kids come from. And they brought ideas, they brought recommended practices, they spoke to both administration and teachers at other schools to find out what they were doing that was helpful, and we were able to implement some immediate changes and get some guidance for long-term changes at Morse Pond. First off, we looked to the school breakfast program that some of the lower elementary schools use, and through good marketing to our kids and some very selfless work on behalf of our teachers, we were able to raise our morning breakfast count from 10 to 80 per morning. And I credit my teachers, my classroom teachers for that, because I tasked them in February with each team coming up with a plan to reach out to their free and reduced and high-need students and find a way to get them involved in breakfast. And some went, and it could be as simple as a conversation, letting them know about the program. Some teams went down and got the list of their kids and picked up breakfast for them every morning and had it waiting for them in the room when they got there. I was floored by it, and I'm hoping that'll be something that we continue in, in future years. Creation of a grandparents academy for fall 2017. We have roughly 35 students that have grandparents that are primary caretakers of our students, and there's obviously a high degree of stress in those situations. Grandparents are often caretakers of kids at that age because of some kind of a trauma or some family concerns. So we're going to look to create a program during the day and after school where grandparents can come in and be educated on a variety of topics, including the software that we use to teach our kids various curriculum, how to find out what their homework is, how to, you know, what's normal for development of pre-teens in terms of mood issues and behavior issues that they may see, even sometimes, you know, just talking them off the ledge that it's okay to wear shorts in January, that a lot of kids do that, and the things that they, the things they get worried about sometimes are just not a big deal. And I think sometimes this, this group needs to hear things like that, so. East Falmouth has a group that's already meeting like that. We're going to tailor some of our work off of what they did, and we're going to pull from some other schools we've found around the country as well. And also working with the directive of curriculum instruction to identify alternative funding for after-school and summer programming for high-need students. Mr. Waterker and I continue to look for ways to expand, whether it's STEM activities, writing activities, basically programming outside of the school days and ways to offset the cost. He and I both feel very strongly that if Morse Pond is going to continue to move in a good direction, we need to beef up what we offer our kids outside those six hours of the school day. So we're continuing to look at those options. Goal three, target chronically absent students and determine appropriate interventions to raise attendance. In 2016, 2017, 9.4% of Morse Pond students were considered chronically absent, missing the 10%, missing more than 10% of the school year. This, from a personal end, is probably the goal that I'm the most proud of in terms of my involvement in. We created a Falmouth Public Schools Attendance Committee to address district-wide attendance issues and write a coherent, comprehensive attendance policy. So put out an email to all staff in the district mid-year and got a phenomenal group of volunteers, which included several members of the committee, Mr. Ryder, Mr. Karati, four public, four Falmouth principals, Ms. Gans, myself, Ms. Ashworth, and Mr. Adams. Assistant principals, SEVAs, school adjustment counselors, my school nurse, teachers, parents, you name the cross, the group in the district, and we had representative members of it. We pulled apart past efforts at creating a attendance policy and what state guidance was and why the state guidance was problematic. We found some districts around the country that had some practices that we really agreed with, and we put them all together to write what I think is a really coherent policy that gives each of the school levels guidance on how to address their student attendance, what the communication from the school should look like, and what their, what the follow-through should be in the hopes of both educating and if we have to, kind of leaning on the parents to get involved with their children's attendance. I feel very strongly about this policy, and I think it's going to do nothing but help our kids be in school more and help our administrators and teachers make sure that that happens. So that policy was submitted to the Policy Subcommittee of the School Committee last month, where it is currently being reviewed by our, by our lawyer, and I'm hoping that in short order it'll be before the full committee for your consideration. We also worked with our guidance counselor to make sure that we had more parent meetings, that we were quicker to react to student attendance issues within the school. But it's really this attendance policy that I think is going to, going forward, give us real teeth to handle student attendance.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Tim, having sat in on most of his meetings, on all the research he did in terms of making the attendance policy more realistic and achieve better results. And I think he did a great job in research, in getting discussions and getting input and finalizing a policy that I think will help the entire district in terms of attendance, so.
Thank you.
Compliments on that one. And I think we also stressed the point of educating parents on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other question? John?
I love the grandparent idea, that's great.
I do, too.
And I just would say that with regards to the shorts, I would say that you could coach them the other way, that it's, it's okay to go against the grain and actually wear long pants or something.
Sure. Nothing wrong with putting on a coat, sure.
Andrea?
I just wanted to add on to the grandparents academy, too. That's such a great idea. And I think in addition to be able to find a way to provide them answers to questions they may have, I think the community that they'll develop so that they have each other to rely on being in a unique situation, I think that you may see some real positives going forward.
That's what we're hoping for. Thank you.
So I have a two-part question. One, about the grandparents academy. We're currently doing it at East Falmouth Elementary School, and I'm happy to see that they'll go from grandparent support group to grandparents academy because that number of grandparents raising their grandchildren is on the rise for, I don't think we need to beat a dead horse on that, but for obvious reasons and not-so-obvious reasons as well. So I'm glad to see that the support of the schools is carrying through after elementary school. I know that it's often very unnerving when you have little littles, but it's good to see that it's carrying through. And my second part is, I'm super proud of our Seashore program that we worked to revise. Anyone who knows me knows that I am so, I'm always happy to talk about it and promote it. And I'm glad to see that some of the things that we had worked so hard on are really coming to fruition, that the teacher, like the teachers having more options, the students that are, can go, are going, that they're exhausted when they're coming home, all the things that we worked so hard for and spent all the time with. It's really heartwarming to hear that it's working and doing well.
I agree.
Great job.
Thank you. I'm already planning to meet with Ellie this summer to talk about next year and what we're going to keep your answer.
So exciting, so exciting. Leah, question about your, the guidance to identify the classes with best attendance. Have you identified some classes and have you been able to see what, you know...
It's a tough year.
What might be those pieces?
You know, I, it was a really, we actually pulled, spent quite a bit of time pulling our attendance apart, and rather than specific teams having, you know, better trends, I think there were school-wide trends that were puzzling to me. I don't know if it was because we had a difficult flu season, you know, we didn't have particularly difficult weather winter in terms of starts and stops. Often that'll, you know, increase attendance if there's a Monday where there's no school and then a Thursday where there's no school. Attendance was down a little bit this year at Morse Pond, you know, but just a tick, and I'm puzzled by it. So I don't have solid answers for you, I'm just hoping that, you know, by being able to better illustrate to parents why attendance is important, that it'll, it'll allow these situations to be addressed better.
I really like how this is a positive, so that you're focusing on where the best attendance is and kind of looking at what's going right there.
Sure.
Instead of saying, it's not okay to not come to school, you know, it's, you know. So I love the positive spin on it.
Thank you.
Phil?
Yeah, two things. One, on the attendance, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And what I like is, on all the school improvements, that has been foremost in everybody's thoughts, the attendance. How do we get better? And I, that's, that's attributed to everybody. Also, the high-needs kids with the school breakfast clubs, the significant improvement is just amazing.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's attributed to your staff, the faculty, everybody involved.
So the really neat thing is a couple of the teams that went, you know, get the breakfast and bring it down to their room. So the school breakfast actually includes enough food for a snack later on in the morning. So what they'll do is, they'll actually, a couple of the teachers will, will share like a staff fridge, and they'll put their food in there and bring it back out mid-morning. And there's a break, and the kids, not only do they get breakfast, they get a snack, and they're, they're excited about it, they're happy about it, you know. The teachers reported nothing but wonderful outcomes from it.
We support and meet the needs of kids.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're here to do.
So along those same lines, you know, kudos to the custodial staff that are dealing with that, because that's an issue. If there's that many kids, fifth graders, eating in a classroom, I can only imagine.
You know I didn't get a single complaint though? Not one, not one.
I believe it, actually. Andrea?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing about attendance, because it's something that's coming up in all the school improvement plans, and, you know, I think there's always going to be so many variables that you can spend a lot of time, and you're just kind of going in circles, because we're never going to really know what those issues are. But there's a lot of that effort being put toward the chronic attendance issues, and that's something that we can find the numbers on, and we can do something about, and it's forming longer relationships. And I think if we, I think we can quit worrying about so much of the other things, is it bad flus and what's going on? And just focus on something that we know is an issue and we can do something about, and let the other stuff be just part of the noise.
So what you'll see from the policy, when you get it, is that we did try to take steps with kids that are tracking towards 10 or 15 absences a year, how to get to them in October and December before it becomes a bigger issue. You're never going to get every kid to come to school every day.
Especially if they're sick, I hope they say.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. Mr. Bushy?
Nicely done, Mr. McLaughlin. I have a fifth grade student at Morse Pond, loves school, and just wanted to pass that along. True story, this is probably on TV now in my living room, so if the kids are watching, go ahead. So...
Are we up here?
Okay, kind of. So goal number one, to increase attendance, chronically absent students, is a nice segue from what Mr. McLaughlin was just talking about. Unfortunately, our attendance, to be honest, we dipped a little bit, a small percentage this year, with the exception of two months, September and March, and I'll talk about March in a couple minutes. You heard Mr. Kazarian mention the, the zero home tutoring scenarios last year, when in being my first year, I thought that we were just going to always have zero home tutoring scenarios, which obviously is not the case, so. It was about mid-year when we saw that we were going to trend this way, and we did add, we brought in an addition of a Gosnold counselor, two days a week. We had a woman named Heidi working with us two days a week, and she was actually outstanding, really helpful in the guidance office, and Alan was actually involved in bringing, bringing that to Lawrence. I don't know if you've mentioned that before, it's something that has come out of the coordination meetings. Everyone is, other folks have mentioned they narrow the focus of the attendance on the coordination meetings, and they are, they really are honed in for portions of the meetings on kids and how we can support them and getting them to school. So I mentioned that March was an improvement for attendance. At one point, we came up with an idea to do an attendance incentive as a positive way to bring in more students who, you know, might be casual about getting to school, and we did find some funds to provide some sweet Lawrence gear, in my opinion, and, and some more lucrative gift certificates to kids who got perfect attendance for the month of March. And some kids benefited, we pulled names out of a hat. It did generate some enthusiasm around it, it trickled into April. I would like to maybe look at doing more positive incentives, and Tyrone Gonzalez, our school psychologist, was also highlighting that how those positive incentives can really help increase, get that last group of kids that might, like I said, be casual about getting to school, if they know there's a reward there. So the goal number two to... Okay, so goal number two is that innovative, innovation, I'm sorry, innovation school focus work. And this really is three goals in one here. I, I want to talk a little bit about the advisory program, and, excuse me, we did not implement an advisory program this year, and that was one of my goals to do. We did make significant progress on, on advisory work, learning about advisory programs, and building some enthusiasm in the building for advisory programs. And recently, we actually took a field trip, if you will, five staff members, myself included, went to an advisory, a school that has an established advisory program in Needham. And we, we, we thought we had a really great idea for how we were going to move forward on it. We polled the staff on what they might be willing to give up, if you will, as far as teaching minutes is concerned, and the, the group that we had really shed a lot of light on, on how experienced, experienced schools do this. And we not went entirely back to the drawing board, but we've got another meeting before the end of the year, and this is likely something that I'm going to roll over to a 17, 18 goal. The distributive leadership model was, I intended on bringing that back, and unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I don't know, I'm looking at on the bright side, staff members were not interested in, in establishing a faculty warrant committee. And like I said, I put out there a number of times how to build, how to generate some enthusiasm for that. They were not interested in doing it. I got two casual volunteers, but folks I talked to said that, you know, with the structure that we have, and the culture of the building, and the way that folks feel like they can come and talk to the administration about whatever's on their mind, and how they can weigh in on any leadership decisions we're making. For example, in the very beginning of the year, before I presented to this group, I talked to my faculty about the actual goals for the school improvement plan, and folks said, we feel like we're involved, so, you know, it didn't seem to be a need, and folks, frankly, are very busy, so I didn't want to create a group just for creating a group's sake. So again, it can be something that we can look at in years coming up. It is part of the innovation school plan. I will say that the student warrant committee is alive and well. For those of you who are friends with us on Facebook, you can see that that work is happening, but as far as the adults are concerned, there didn't appear to be a need. And the past two advanced pilot program, program in Team Three, just met with Coach Busher, Mr. Busher, the other day, and he's enthusiastic about the, about the engagement of the kids. He feels strongly that even though it's a little too early to tell, next week he won't know specifically which kids, and a lot of them are on the bubble, but the fact that many kids right now are in the bubble for having to participate in summer enrichment program is evidence that they're working to the very end of the school year, which may not have been the case in previous years for some groups of students that lack motivation. I should have backed up and said that this, this program, this past two advanced program really is... program really is a, maybe less stringent is the way to describe it, credit scenario that you might see at a high school. So, if the students don't pass a certain amount of classes, our core classes, then they must go to the summer enrichment program in order to advance to the eighth grade. Okay, so identifying that we have certain pockets of kids that say, they realize pretty early that I don't necessarily have to pass any of my classes to advance to eighth grade. To address that, put in this program. They got the parents on board right away. Parents signed agreements. Yes, if my student doesn't make an academic effort over the course of the year, they're going to be in the summer enrichment program. And by the way, we want kids to take the summer enrichment program. Summer enrichment program is a really great way to stop kids from backsliding before they move on to the next year. So, it really is a win-win. If kids push it till the end of the year, pass their classes and move on, then that's great. If they work hard and, you know, need a little extra support come late June, then we've got it for them. So, it really was a win-win. Going to, this will be goal number three, to improve student achievement and continue to narrow gaps for subgroups, increasing the use of differentiated instruction practices and supporting staff to create increasingly inclusive learning environments. And I should use the word maintaining differentiated instruction because the differentiation and differentiated instruction really is, I would say, very alive and well in just common practice. You know, the folks in this room have heard Mr. Waterco say that differentiation is an expectation, not a strategy. And, and you really can walk into classrooms in the Lawrence School and see kids using practices that Dr. Hockett has, has coached us with through just, you know, Sonia's working with the curriculum council and providing the text on differentiation and coming and even speaking with this group on, during the time when she was here for a three-day stretch of professional development, which I would say that the curriculum office absolutely got their money's worth out of Dr. Hockett during that three-day stretch. She was really all over the place and worked with, I can't even tell you how many teachers. But, so differentiation alive and well. I think we talked over those approaching 10 years that she's been working with the district. As far as inclusive learning environments are concerned, we, we have gotten positive feedback from Dr. Harris and her colleague, her colleague Ms. Capitano. All of our English and math teachers at this point have, have, had gone through the RISE training, which is revitalizing inclusive instruction for students and educators. And Mrs. Viera and our CBA, Meg Valdez, spent a lot of time doing the, working on the schedule to help co-planning. Obviously, we want to, we want to have our teachers in these inclusive practices co-teaching, but in order to get good co-teaching and effective co-teaching, they need time to co-plan. And that's not always built into the schedule right away. We, we know we have content area teachers and team, team teachers have time together. But content area teacher may not always have common planning time with a special ed case manager. So, they did a lot of work with the schedule to help provide that time. And we, we also made some steps to help it for next year. So, even though I don't see this goal being one I use next year, we'd definitely be able to continue to make positive gains with our inclusive practices. As far as measuring that data, you know, we are confident that these students are going to do, they're going to continue to narrow achievement gaps and perform better. We don't have, we don't have MCAS data at this point, though, to really look at those gains. But we're absolutely going to be doing that. So, I think that was the overview. I, I know I mentioned a couple of times that I, I didn't meet but made significant and some progress on goals. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that I still feel very strongly that Lawrence School is an outstanding school. It's a really great culture. When you walk into the building, you can feel it. The kids enjoy their time there. The adults really care about the kids. And sometimes, sometimes the adults don't always, they don't always agree. But I will say that when there's a disagreement, it's because they disagree in what's best for kids, which I think is really important. And it's a supportive network. And like I said, I'm just proud to be working in this community and look forward to next year.
Great. Questions for Mr. Bushy? I have one question. I've lost track of the innovation plan. Is it in?
It's on the, it's on our school website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it was resubmitted and it's all, okay. I had lost track of it.
It's there.
I was just wondering if you were talking about the rewards for attendance and trying to implement that. Do you find any issues with students who, you know, there's many times you cannot attend, you know, you are ill and you should not be in the classroom. I guess I'm wondering if there are students who are feeling bad that they cannot be in the drawing for a reward.
Yeah. So, good question. So, we actually, we, you know, we thought about that before we did the attendance incentives and we did different categories of incentives. So, we rewarded kids based on homeroom percentages and team percentages. So, for the kids that weren't in the perfect attendance drawing, they were still able to participate. If their homeroom got to 98%, you know, everyone in the group got a water bottle, let's say, you know, Lawrence School Bulldog. So, they, we did think about that because we don't want to put pressure on a kid who's got the flu to come into school. So, they were still able to be identified as contributing to the overall attendance percentage of that team or, or homeroom.
Okay.
Summer enrichment. What's your timeline on that? How long is that session?
It's five weeks and it will start, I believe, July 10th. And actually, if it's, if you're really hot, it's not a bad idea to swing through the high school because the AC is always cranking down there in the summer. And you can see the kids. And summer enrichment, I will say, is actually a really cool, a really cool learning experience for these kids. Ms. Nims does an outstanding job, brings together a group of teachers that, that you know that they are really in it for the right reasons. They care about these kids. You know, there's not, it's not a really lucrative thing to give up your summertime to go to summer school and work with kids. And admittedly, by many of these kids, it's not their first pick to do in the summer. So, but the kids have a nice time there. I would say, I, I think that they learn. We have, they, they report out on the progress that the kids make. The attendance is not always as awesome as we'd like it to be, but they have a celebration at the end of the summer. And it's a program that I would like to see continue.
And secondly, co-teaching, which I think is just a great professional development, academic involvement. Is it possible, based on scheduling, to do the co-planning? Or is that something that we just kind of hope we can get and we're not always going to quite, quite get there?
Yeah, well, it's possible to do and we're doing it right now. We, like I said, we made adjustments to schedules, when teachers are going to be at a duty scenario or when they're going to be, whether we can move when classes meet. I don't think we can match the amount of time that, like, alike content area teachers meet. And I don't think that we can match the time that team teachers meet because those are foundational scheduling scenarios that we have with our, our school structure right now. But we can make gains on it. Right now, we know that we have at least one entire block out of the six-day rotation where they, where they are scheduled to meet together. So, it's an expectation. And then in addition to that, we have another, I'll call it opportunity, where they have, the preps happen to be aligned. So, they can, if they're able to, you know, with the, with all the other expectations that we have on teachers, if they're able to meet, the time is there. So, it's, you know, part an expectation, part an opportunity. And, you know, like I said, we've got some positive feedback from Dr. Harris on making gains there.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion about the enrichment. So, what you're doing with the positive incentives for attendance?
Yeah.
So, I run a summer program and I do positive incentives for attendance and I ended up having 50 perfect attendance last year.
Wow.
So, if you continue that and see if the summer, you know, you need to have some good things that you're going to...
Yeah. Well, we got good stuff.
That's all you need.
I may or may not think that the stuff we got is cooler than the kids did, but...
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any last questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Ms. Gans?
She might just work in a night.
You're just going to have to watch the whole meeting over to find out what the heck you did.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
No, it's just, it's just a plug.
It's just the power plug in the background.
No, but I moved it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
We back to square one?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Okay.
We're having a neck of a tongue tonight on St. Guss.
I'll get the copy, please.
We have it.
Yeah.
We can see it.
You can see it, okay.
Do you want us to remind you?
Oh, thank you.
And then you can just talk about it.
So, I was saying, I needed it because my, the copy I have has tiny, tiny.
Put the light on.
No, don't put the light on.
Okay.
It's much better. All cats are gray in the dark, right? So, thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Kazarian, and Mr. Bushy. So, for some reason, I have six goals and everybody else has three goals. I don't really know how that came about. But anyway, I'll go through the goals. So, the first goal is to, again, where's my first goal on here?
Chronically absent students.
Sorry, yeah, chronically, chronically absent students. So, we did have a unique year at Falmouth High School, as everyone knows. I'm sorry, Ryan.
[laughing]
With the very unfortunate, traumatic tragedy in December, which we knew with every, everyone with whom we consulted told us that would definitely have an impact on attendance and, and academic achievement. So, we, we definitely saw an impact on attendance. I can tell you, in looking at our chronically absent students, based on the SIMS data from March 1st of 2016 compared to March 1st of 2017, we actually are up 2%. Not, we're 24% chronically absent versus 22% chronically absent last year at the same time of year. So, unfortunately, that's not good news. We have, however, though, really focused on attendance at Falmouth High School, as Mr. Kazarian alluded to too. In our coordination meetings, we talk about attendance. We send out regular attendance letters to families and students. We have regular meetings with families and guardians about attendance. And one of the, the things that sort of stymies our efforts for attendance, to improve attendance at the high school, is in order to file a court action, a child in need of services, we can't do that once they reach 16 because the legal requirement, the legal age for attending school is 16. So, we really are stymied at our efforts and that's, you know, a 10th grader. But one of the things I started thinking about is when we have students with, typically students with chronic attendance problems, chronic absenteeism problems, they, we often find those students are our dropouts. And so, I said one day, you know what, I've got a call, they would then go to take the HSET or the GED. They would tell us they were going to go do that, but then they couldn't make the trip to either the Center in Hyannis at Cape Cod Community College or to Plymouth. So, I contacted the DUCY HSET GED director just out of the blue and he got right back to me and said, "We would completely support a, having Falmouth High School be a test center site." So, we are actually in the process of hoping to do that. We have to open it up to anybody who would like to take the test at Falmouth High School, which is fine. But at least our students then will be able to take it at Falmouth High School. And not that we want to encourage students to drop out, but that then does not, that doesn't count as a dropout for Falmouth High School if they take that test within October, the October 1st, I think it is, Sonia, after the time that they've dropped out. So, hopefully, we'll be getting that up and running next year. We also developed a stricter loss of credit policy. Students at the high school lose credit for missing certain classes. We've been very, we've started entering attendance contracts with students about that. And we started a stricter tardy protocol. So, before students would come in, they'd go to their first period class and the teacher may or may not mark them tardy. So, we did not have a consistent process. And then students would complain. You know, Mrs. Gans doesn't mark any tardy, but Mr. McLaughlin does and we both entered first period at the exact same time. So, we now took one of our staff aides and we put her right in the main lobby. And when the bell rang, the tardy bell rings at 7:22, she starts stopping students and writing the tardy passes. So, it's a consistent absolute across the board. Everyone is treated equally. And you would be amazed how that tardy line has shrunk since we started it. It's really, it's, Ryan sees it, yes. It's very, it's amazing. So, you know, it is an early start time for high schoolers, but it's had a good impact and we're getting, we're decreasing our tardies. I, oh, we also have IST meetings at the high school, which all the schools have, which are oftentimes, we look at students with attendance problems and it impacts their achievement. Because if you're not in school, it goes without saying, you're not getting the instruction that you need. So, we are definitely focused on attendance. I think this was a unique year that hopefully next year I will continue with an attendance goal and hopefully we'll see an upward trend instead of a downward trend. But that's where we are this year. My second goal is what Mr. Kazarian discussed earlier, the medical review team, which although it didn't have an impact necessarily or in a decrease of our students who were hospitalized or required tutoring, but it definitely streamlined the process for us. And we were able to tell physicians, "You need to give us an end time for when this tutoring will end and we need updated documentation." Because beforehand, we would often get a note that would say, "Child needs home hospital tutoring for whenever, as long as they need it." And there was no, but under the statute and under the regulations, we can actually request frequent updates. So, we started doing that. One of the things, though, that we're looking at, and you can see at the bottom of that slide, we started thinking about, so we've got these kids going out getting tutoring that's not at all like being in the school and being in the classroom. And there's a program called Bridge for Resilient Youth Transition. And it started about 12 or 13 years ago at Brookline High School and it's been very successful and it has expanded to numerous high schools throughout the Commonwealth. And I reached out to them and they have come and consulted with us several times. In fact, we have another meeting tomorrow morning with one of the gentlemen from there. And we are hoping to plan our own BRIGHT program at the high school next year. I've tried to restructure some faculty members in order to facilitate that happening. And we literally, and Mr. Kazarian, we went through 870 students in one meeting with the BRIGHT people and looked at their attendance, their discipline. We went through every single student and created a flow chart of our priority need students and what we can do. And the, the difference between a BRIGHT program and just home hospital tutoring and your off-site tutors, it's a specific program, it's a specific reentry into school program, there's very specific protocol. So, we can say to parents and guardians, "We have a program here at school where we can slowly get your child back into school. We understand they had to be out, but we can get them back into school." That's one of the things we find that's the hardest. When they're out doing tutoring, when they're not in the school, it's very hard to actually get them to come back and even just slowly re-enter their regular schedule. We actually, with Mr. Kazarian's help, though, this year, instead of having off-site tutoring, we started telling families, "You're going to have tutoring, but you're going to come to the high school." And we saw an improvement with that. So, hopefully, the BRIGHT program will have a real impact on our home hospital tutoring situation. There's nothing really, you know, no explanation for the spike in hospitalizations except for this is what society, this is what we're seeing in society. I am really looking forward to the McLean people coming in, though, to really help us with that as well. And I'm hoping that we can use them in consultation with our BRIGHT program.
And really good providers that deal with chronically ill kids or kids with long-term illnesses will ask if the school has a Bridge program.
Has a program.
Because they want those kids back at school too.
Exactly.
I'm just so happy that...
Yeah, it's, we're really happy about it. It's been a very thoughtful process and I even got some money from Charlie to have some faculty members do some summer work to develop the program materials, which I'll be involved in as well and I'll oversee that. So, I'm really hoping it will be a nice program. The third goal is Clipper Time, which many of you have heard about. And that was a very deliberate, thoughtful process that took over a year to really plan. And it has been amazingly successful beyond what I anticipated. I think beyond what teachers at the high school anticipated, beyond what students anticipated. We've had other schools that have heard about it, that have come to visit and tour Clipper Time. Today, we had the Cape Cod Regional Technical School come. And they actually, when, when other schools and their faculty members come and visit, they, we go into some of the classrooms. I talk about the process and then we visit classrooms. And I say, "Just ask kids." I won't, I'll be in the background, just ask kids, ask teachers what they think. And it's amazing. It's, it's uniformly 100% positive feedback. It's uniformly 100% positive feedback. A couple faculty meetings ago, one of our building union reps took an anonymous vote, did the faculty want to continue with Clipper Time next year, yes or no? I left the room. It was a union matter. I wasn't in the faculty. 69 faculty members were there, and 69 faculty members voted to continue with Clipper Time. So, that was pretty amazing. I expected at least a few to say no, and because it is extra work. There's no doubt about it. It's extra work for teachers, and it shaved six minutes off of every period. So, there's time, you know, there's time lost when you think about it over an entire year. There's definitely a concern that you might have to go quicker through your curriculum than you otherwise did, but we'll look at that again next year. But right now, the surveys that we've done, the response we've had from faculty, parents, and students has been overwhelmingly positive, which is really nice. An unexpected benefit of it was many students said to us, even though they're working during Clipper Time, and if you come to the high school and visit classes, you will see, they get right to work, they feel like it's a downtime and a break, and it has relieved some of the stress that they're feeling. Students uniformly also report that it has helped with their homework loads. And the teachers also report, you know, if you have students who come after school, you could have 30, 40 students come, and you're really trying to work, you know, with individual students, and it's hit or miss. But in Clipper Time, you get these students, you can work with them one-on-one. It's just been, it really is far better than I ever expected it to be. So, we're very, very happy about that, and we're just continuing to monitor it. You can see the next slide is, that's the schedule before and after, so you can see where we put in Clipper Time. So, Clipper Time is a 33-minute period every single day, Monday through Friday. Monday is Mentor Monday, where the students meet in small groups with a mentor or faculty member, and then they schedule their Clipper Time for the rest of the week. Some students are pre-scheduled by their classroom teachers, some students aren't. So, it's really been beneficial for us. The fourth goal is examine homework, which tied into that. So, we just, homework is an ongoing discussion at the high school, and teachers have been very, very cognizant of, is my homework meaningful? Do I need to assign homework tonight? They've been very, we've had reports that students and families are feeling lighter homework loads. But homework is still important, you know, and it's an important aspect of learning to do independent work. So, I'm not a proponent of getting rid of homework altogether, but we're certainly looking at homework very deliberately. We, oh, yes, we had a homework survey. We have a student, Theodore, actually, who is not here tonight. She's done phenomenal surveys of students and parents and teachers. And interestingly enough, her homework surveys revealed the benefit of Clipper Time with homework as well. So, that was a nice result. The fifth goal I have is to increase public relations at Falmouth High School. Last year, the class of 2016 purchased a beautiful sign to go outside at Falmouth High School along the street to advertise all the different things that Falmouth High School does, whether it's an event or an achievement or something. We just ran into some problems with the design, sign bylaws and design review committee, so that's on hold, but we're working on that. Otherwise, we've really just tried to let people know how wonderful Falmouth High School is. We talk about it with eighth grade families. I encourage families who are considering other high schools to come and meet with me. Many have taken me up on that, so that's been a positive thing. We did, with Ryan Weber's help, a fabulous school choice video, which is also on TV as an advertisement. We did, with Alan Kazarian's help and Ryan Weber, a video of students, college students, where I'm going to after high school. It wasn't just college, if they were going to the service or they were going to work. Just trying to put those things out there about all the wonderful things that we can do at Falmouth High School.
Mary, can we have a little more information on the sign that Class 2016 gift?
Yes, it's the class gift. So, we originally, I'm not entirely clear on, the size apparently violated, was too large for the...
Can you just get us the paperwork so we, I can show the school committee?
Yes, I definitely will. Yes, absolutely.
That would be great.
We, I think there, I don't know if there was miscommunication. We showed it to the town what the proposal was, and we were initially told, "Oh, it's okay." But then, when the design review committee looked at it, they said it was too big. So, I actually think there's a way that I can get it approved. I just haven't had the time to do that yet.
I think it should come before the school committee, however.
Yes.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Last goal. So, the last goal is the achievement gap effort. So, we are really looking at MCAS data, you know, I was going to say widening the gap, closing the gap. We do not want to widen the gap. We've done some great efforts. Clipper Time has actually helped with that. We had, for example, our English department head during Clipper Time, when we had students that we had identified as maybe struggling on ELAMCAS, she did MCAS workshops with them before the ELAMCAS, and that was a very, they liked that, they felt prepared for that. We also, just very thankfully, we had a couple of students who needed to take, retake MCAS because they had failed it before, and they were seniors. And they passed it, which was phenomenal. And we were, we had a little ceremony in my office. It was very exciting. They were so excited because they needed that to graduate. We have still the differentiated with Jessica Hockett, which Mr. Bushy talked about. Deb Harris is doing RISE training to help us with co-teaching. We do co-teaching at the high school as well. I think if you walked into any classroom at the high school, you would see amazing differentiated instruction, because for the most part, we have heterogeneous classrooms at the high school. Unless you get to, you know, the AP level or some honors classes, you're really in a heterogeneous class that's mixed. And so, the teachers do an unbelievable job of reaching every single student in the classroom. We have IST meetings when we see a student who's struggling. We have regular IST meetings that I chair. We really try to dig into the data to see what is going on with the student and what can we do to help the student achieve. Sometimes, it boils down to attendance and homework completion. And those seem to be the trends that we see, that we try to address the most. And I think that's about it for Falmouth High School.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Gans?
On the hospital tutoring protocol, I just keep running that through my fast reservoir, semi-useless knowledge. You mentioned the fact that students can come in for tutoring after school.
No, during the school day.
During the school day.
But at the school, yes.
At the school. Okay.
I also want to throw a piece in there, because we met Tom Bushy and I and some of the counselors with the pediatricians at Falmouth Hospital.
Oh, yes.
That was a great meeting that we had that day. So, we went to their morning meeting, and we met with them almost 45 minutes, talking about the issues we're having, the issues they're seeing. And they're under a lot of pressure, too, from families and students, and they mean to sign kids out or to get kids help, too. So, we kind of came with a compromise that we would have, student would not be sent out of school for more than 30 days. And then, at the same time, that would be repeated, they would have to have multiple forms after every 30 days. And then, at the same time, they would not, they would not prescribe in their documents, like some doctors would write, "Needs to be out of school, make sure they have online classes and all this stuff." You know what I mean? We said, "You deal with the medical, we'll deal with the education," you know what I mean, and try to come together. And then, not, and to suggest that tutoring may take place in the school setting. So, we had a, we had a, that was a meeting out of that.
And on top of that, I also, it was on my slide, but I didn't mention it. I invited the school physician to one of our coordination meetings, where we talked about attendance, and we asked her to have a layout to the physician community, the issues that we're dealing with, and seeking their help with us as another support in that regard.
And also, working toward what is the whole plan for this child? Not just what is the school plan? What may be the therapeutic piece, and what may be the medical piece? So that you, so that it's all coordinated is a new wrinkle to your process, which I think is really important.
And the, okay, and it's starting to, some degree of clarity, because I think that's an immense problem for kids to come back and get caught up.
Yeah.
And I think...
But I'll tell you, it's...
I think the online is a great suggestion, and some schools do a home base, where the teacher will actually go to a house. It's additional stipends and things of that nature. But again, there's some variables out there that can be looked at, but I think the online is very appropriate at this point in time.
I guess, one more thing, it's been helpful, because we can go to a teacher and say, "All right, what units did you miss in geometry?"
Yes.
All right, and then we show them our apex, and they highlight, so the student that's out for that certain period of time, working on those units, and then catches up with the class and can go back in. Instead of taking always, you know, all the lesson plans to the tutor, all the tests back and forth, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So, we're getting there.
And it's not, not unique to Falmouth High School. This is, as other people said, it's definitely across the state, across the country, where we're seeing these issues requiring home hospital tutoring.
And the thing about Clipper Time, it may be time loss instructionally, but it's, I think, a lot of support gained.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's really important for kids.
Yes, it definitely is.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick historical question on the, excuse me, the GED site at the high school. Didn't the high school used to be a GED testing center years ago?
I think Lawrence was.
But we had one in the district, and then it went away.
We had one, and it was Howard Campbell who ran it.
Oh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Okay.
And then it went away.
And then, but now, hopefully, it's coming back.
Thank you for taking that on.
That's incredible. Thank you. And I like whatever we can do to promote education and help these students into adulthood and be successful adults. That's great, so.
I was surprised at how supportive DESI was. I mean, Mr. Kazarian, we weren't, we had did a conference call with the man in charge, Mr. Mecham at DESI of HSET-GED programs, and he said, "We understand your geographic problem. We would completely support Falmouth High School being a testing site." So...
That's great.
It was very, yeah.
It's a real good moment.
Walter.
Just a, just a quick comment. I know I sent you an email, but just in front of the group, what a great job you did at the graduation ceremony.
Oh, thank you.
And I think the smart thing of having at least that field day to deal with that issue the day before was really great leadership on your part, so congratulations.
Thank you, Walter.
That's beautiful. Eric.
I just want to say thank you to the enterprise, too, for that.
Yes.
I don't know. It was amazing. So, you can really see what diversity, what wonderful, the pictures, the time. Were you involved in doing some of those interviews?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, it was a wonderful...
Yeah, she did an amazing job.
It's a best advertisement for us.
It was great.
Couldn't do it any better.
Yeah.
And one last thing, the sign board, is that electronic sign board?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good luck. It's going to take you a few years to do that.
I know.
It's not a Kevin Durant slam dunk. It is, it is patience, and it is just following procedures and process and meeting with town people and certain committees and things of that nature. But you'll get it. But I went through that, and it is patience.
Yeah.
It's like a Guinness, you gotta wait for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. I love hearing the updates. And then, I also like to know that what we can expect that we're going to see again next year, you know? Because they're not done. Sure. What do you want? What do you want?
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Oh, yes, they give it to you.
Hey, Tim? Give it to you.
No, we're just going to, yeah, yeah. So, we're actually just going to bump ahead and take a couple of things out, at least one thing out of order, so that Mr. Clarkson doesn't have to sit here any longer.
Yeah.
So, let's move down to act on the Carousel of Light license.
So, in your packet, you will see two things. You will see my May 26th letter to Mr. Sherman, sort of extending the Carousel of Light's license. We ran into some blips along the way, and so I worked to sort of extend last time's, last year's license, and then I created a license for 2017, and you have that in your packet also. And Mr. Clarkson, Mr. Sherman and I are going to be working to kind of come up with a timeline that we can all work on and agree to for the following year. But we did get it up and running. We're good to go, on time, and it worked.
Did you want to add anything about the carousel? Anything we should know?
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Troy Clarkson. I'm the president of the Carousel of Light, which hopefully, you know is a local nonprofit. All of the proceeds from our operation of this locally hand-carved gem are turned back to the community. We establish a new, a different charity every year, and we are profoundly grateful for the support of the school committee and of the superintendent for our ability to continue to operate this, this unique gem in our downtown. So, I'm thrilled to volunteer my time for such a great organization, and I'm very grateful for a wonderful relationship with Superintendent Taylor. And again, very, very grateful for your support. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but short of that, look forward to another successful year.
Any questions? Andrew.
Has the license changed significantly since last year? Or would this be basically just updated?
No. It's been updated. That's, it is, and we did have it checked through town council, just to make sure that all bases are covered.
So, if we're going to discuss the actual contract, can we get a...
Yeah, I motion that we approve the grant of a license for the Carousel of Light for 2017.
A second now. Okay. Now you can make it. Go ahead.
So, we just need to edit, sorry, June 27th, 2016, to change that to 2017.
Under paragraph E.
To Monday, September 4th, instead of 2016, 2017.
We can change that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, now we can have discussion on the actual contract. Any discussion on the contract?
No.
I have a discussion point that just, some of the proceeds that, to be determined, we've talked about in the past, but to be earmarked specifically for the Mullin Hall Field, which gets a lot more foot traffic because of it, and that, you know, whatever, whatever we end up actually defining as that amount, that it continued to be yearly every time we knew this license.
So, maybe we can, you could get with Patrick and see if that's feasible or how that would look. Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Yes.
Thank you so much.
We will make the changes. We will scan it to you for your signature, get it back.
I'll get it right back.
We'll be done.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so now we'll back up. Let's go back up to the operating protocols. So, in your packet, you should have the very small print with our operating protocols that we review. Anytime there's a change in school committee members or superintendency, we put these together a few years ago. Actually, the committee wrote them ourselves a few years ago, after a lot, a lot of discussion and research, to make sure that we were functioning well as a committee and that we had clear and defined roles, how we would operate, what each party is supposed to do. So, any comment? Oh, and I also want to say that I would like to have these reviewed at our retreat this summer, where we can really dig into their content and make substantial changes, but if there's any, you know, smaller changes, we could deal with them tonight. Any comments, questions on them? Okay. We don't have to approve them, right? We just need to sign them. We don't vote on them. So, can we, can we just do it in executive session? Can we sign them instead of passing that giant piece of paper around? Okay. As long as there's no discussion about it. Last chance.
I have my big jail, so I'll have to, I'll have to wait.
Oh, you can get a Sharpie, and then we hang them up and post them. Great. Thanks. Next is the recommendations of the policy subcommittee for edits to the handbooks. So that's the purple sheet with all of the updated information. Who wants to take this policy? Or Nancy? Do we have any of this? Any information that we need on this at all?
I don't think, we, it did go to the policy.
It already went to them?
They, yes. And they had the originals, they had the changes, and this is a summary and substantive changes that the principals and Zach are recommending.
Can we get a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we accept these changes.
A second. Any discussion?
One discussion, just, we're going to have to go back and revisit, including Kids Club.
Okay. So there's a couple places, that was one of my questions, the couple places that Kids Club occurs. My other question was about, it says in a number of places, gender being added to the affirmative action, nondiscrimination pieces, and I'm wondering if it's, is it gender or gender identity was my question? Do we know?
It has to be gender identity.
It's identity.
Gender identity.
Yep. And what happened was, in some of the policies, they were updated; in others, they were never updated.
Okay.
So it was kind of all over the place.
So can we make, make this actual change?
It depends on the policy, though. Some policies state gender identity, and others just say gender.
Gender.
So it is different depending on what the policy is and where it comes from. It's state language.
It's state, it's, it's valid, it's state language.
Yeah, these are state policy.
In all of the handbooks. So every place that that appears, it would be specific to where, whatever, whichever it's supposed to be. I just want to make sure it's right. I don't want to prove anything that's wrong.
I think it has been.
Okay.
So it would match, it would match whatever the state has mandated.
For that language, for that policy.
So we don't have to decide on it?
Correct.
That's already done by the state.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, we do check on what the state says. We don't automatically rubber stamp it, but, but there are different places that it can come from. So it's, as Charlie said, must call you Chuck in public.
So I would just go back, I would just ask that this go back, and you double-check it, and then double-check the Kid, the Kids Club pieces, we have that conversation.
Any other? This might have been a question when the school nurses were here, but had the piece about removing LICE information, do we know why that's being removed? So I can speak to that. So that came from the school nurses. The, of course, I don't have the policy right in front of me, but the language that was around it before just needed to be cleaned out, if you will. There was a little tongue-in-cheek that we had going back and forth about that. And that, that came specifically from them to make their daily task, dealing with LICE, easier for them. It was a dated policy that needed updating.
Where are you looking?
Elementary.
Elementary Schools, number 33. It says that it's removed.
Right, yeah.
Well, that also changed, the policy change, the health policy.
Yeah. And I think it was a recommendation from the state on how you manage LICE in a school.
Right. Because it's not, you can't keep them, you can't force them to keep them home. You can't, there's a lot of state language around LICE. It's not a, it's not like an outbreak anymore. It's not, it's, it's almost like poison ivy is sort of out there.
So is it removed completely?
No.
They, like the, they submitted their recommended changes, remember?
Yeah, that was a while ago.
These come from the nurses, so we just say they know what.
And what, a little behind that was, previously, it listed a lot of the protocol that the nurses would go through. In light of the change in the policy, some of that protocol that was listed is really not applicable anymore.
Right. It really just needed an update, and it came right from the boots on the ground, so we just want it.
Unfortunately, the policy manual is a living organism. I mean, it, it grows every year, or it loses weight, gains weight, it just, it's not so much that you make changes, it's just lots of updates.
Updates.
Updates, yeah.
Revisiting things. I have one other question on Falmouth High School, number 17. It's, it just says removal based on principal's request. You know what was removed?
So for the policy subcommittee, they had the handbooks in front of them, so.
Oh, so they just went down?
Yeah. So they could physically open to page 17. I'll have to get back.
That's okay. I was just curious. I'm sure if it's what they want, I'm sure.
There's so many.
Any other discussion on our handbooks? So all in favor of approving the handbook changes with a double-check on the Kids Club and gender language? I, oh, who, in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, I actually, I have another discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
So, no, no, but the gender thing, I mean, when you say you're, you know, we're going to research, and so we would just default then to whatever the state has for that verbiage for each category?
It sort of depends on the language.
You can't, whatever that is. That is, it's a set clause of what it looks like.
Well, I was asking Charles, so we would, we're just saying we're going to default to the, the state language?
To what the language is.
That's what we have to do.
Okay.
Then I'm an aye.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so let's start again. So all in favor of approving the handbook changes with a double-check on the Kids Club and the language preset by Mass Law on gender? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about that, John.
I'm a aye.
Okay. Meeting dates. So we just need to approve our meeting dates for the coming year in the handbook, listing them out. They're pretty much the same as always with the Tuesdays, except for the town meeting dates, and almost all here, with the exception of the town meeting dates. Can I get a motion to approve those meeting dates?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting dates for school year 17 to 18.
Second?
In a second.
Any discussion?
Is, why is it July 11? Don't we usually do like the 24th of July and like the 24th of August or thereabouts? Is there?
Right. So that is a date that we won't have our administrators to, because they'll be out for B.C. related stuff. So we had a schedule around it. And I think there was one other meeting that was scheduled around another date as well. So there's a little bit of difference, but for the most part, the same.
I'm sorry, are we motioning this?
We have a motion, we have a second, and we're on discussion.
Discussion? Can we adjust December 5th? I'm not sure to what, but if it could not be December 5th, how do we get?
Can we adjust it? Is that what your question is?
Correct, yeah. All right, so request, and we try to adjust that if possible.
To be, because we usually meet the first.
On the second and fourth.
Right? The first Tuesday? Is it the first Tuesday?
No.
No, second Tuesday. So that is not the second Tuesday? So do we have, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I'm wondering if that is like Hanukkah or?
It's a good question, because I don't know.
December, sorry, lurking on it. I don't have it. I don't have a holiday schedule. Doesn't anybody have a school calendar? Do you have a school calendar?
We're just going to check why it was changed.
Yeah. I'm betting it's probably like the first night of Hanukkah or something.
I think it was, too, and I think there was a problem.
It's not on your calendar.
I don't, I don't have a school calendar in front of me. Sorry.
I had to put in my password.
Let's wait and make sure. Any other comments besides that December date? Any other discussion besides December?
You sure you can't move the July one, huh? They're going to be gone, but I'm going to be in Paris, so I won't be able to go there.
I, I think we, we kind of opened a can of worms to start changing dates.
I'm only kidding around.
You should take it as a gift if you're going to miss.
No, I'm just killing time while, while Sharon's coming back with the thing.
So why don't we do this? Why don't, can we approve it and, and come back to that? Because, you know, like you said, Leah, I don't want to sit and find every date that one person can't make or whatever. I'm sure we set it up for a reason, and we just, oh, sorry. She's back. She's quick. I was going to say we're going to just. Does it have the back?
I got that sticky now.
This doesn't have the, it doesn't have the back. So let's do that. Let's approve what we have, and we'll revisit that December, the strange dates, and find out what the reasoning behind it is, and we can always amend our calendar if we need to. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the calendar for the coming school year?
Aye.
All opposed? Wait, do we count? I have to count. It wasn't very loud. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that was a lot. Okay. Opposed? Any abstentions?
And I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Thanks, John. It passes. And we'll come back to it again and look at those, the strange dates, the July and December dates.
We don't really need to look at the July one.
Oh, okay.
We have a reason.
We do have a reason.
Yeah, I, I was serious, but I was fooling around, waiting for Sharon, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. That's the first church service.
Right, that's what I thought.
Oh, that's what I thought. I just didn't have it in front of me. So the 12/12 is the first night of Hanukkah, so we wouldn't be accessible to some of our families, so which is why it was moved.
Keep it to December 5th.
Okay. Did everyone hear that? That is Hanukkah. 12/12 is the first night of Hanukkah, so we wouldn't be accessible to some of our families.
I thought we weren't doing anything based on religious, religious events.
We don't do it for religion. We do it to make sure that we're accessible to the families that might have. We're not changing it because of religion, we're changing it because of accessibility, just like we wouldn't have school on Christmas because, not because it's a religious holiday, but because it would affect the participation of our families. Same reason as any other time we have to move some.
Was it, wasn't it related to the, the number and the scope of that? How many folks wouldn't be able to attend? And are we, do we conclude that the number and the scope would be impacted by that?
That the, so we were going to, we can't, we're not going to poll our, our student body and find out how many of them are Jewish and then determine whether or not they would be able to participate in the meeting. Is that what you mean?
No, no, I just, we had defined it very specifically. This specific committee was very aggressive to make sure that we weren't specifically switching dates because of religious events. And I feel that that's, I feel it's inconsistent, and it was inconsistent with the last year, and I guess it's going to be inconsistent with this year.
So I, I didn't understand that. It was something that came out of the calendar committee, if the calendar committee wants to take that up again.
We can move forward to another topic.
Certainly do that. Can certainly do that. School committee appointments and other assignments. It's the white paper with the draft. Hopefully, everybody got something that they wanted. We had a lot of spots to fill and new items that were added, which made it even more challenging to make sure that everything had a person in it. One of the new things, there are more people assigned to the Health and Wellness Task Force down at the bottom. There is, what is it? Bill signing, number 11. So we put, I put this in, but it is pending discussion here and also approval from the town. I didn't want to not assign it because I knew we were going to approve it tonight, but we had talked a little bit last year about the new, about the financial management law that now permits to have one person sign for the bills whenever they're, whenever they need to be signed, and then for us as a committee to then approve it at the next meeting. So instead of having five of us need to sign the bills every time, it would be one person that does it, and then we would just have it as a standing item on our agenda, that we would approve it every time we had a school committee meeting. So does anyone, does anyone want to weigh in? Do we want that? Do we not want that?
I think that would be really helpful for.
Yeah, I feel bad for Anne Marie, who has to.
Chase us down?
Chase us down.
Just a big waste of time.
Does anyone have an issue with it, I guess, then?
No.
The only issue I may have is, I personally have found things in there that I can't vote on, so unless I, or I can't sign on. So unless I actually see them, I don't know whether I can.
Oh, you wouldn't know whether you need to abstain from those particular items.
Right.
So what I had spoke with Patrick about was that the, that the notice would still go out to everybody, the bills are ready, and anyone is always welcome to come and look at them.
Yeah.
But only one person would have to show up. And I would say that your office could figure it out and let her know, but there's no way for you to do that.
Can I, can I add? I think that you could abstain, when we take a vote to approve that, you could abstain from the vote.
Which means I still have to read them off.
You still have to look at them.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
In order to abstain or no not, or to vote, you'd have to.
Have to look at them.
Can't we all go in and look at them anytime we want, though?
Yes, everyone can.
We can all go in and look at them anytime we want.
And people that know that there's a potential conflict would need to do that. Yeah.
So would we have a blanket vote? So if this is our stack of bills, and if Megan just needs to abstain from one, would ?
It would be, it would be a total.
It couldn't be a.
It would be a blanket total.
Okay.
So you'd have to abstain from all of them.
Okay.
Just unfortunately, yeah. I don't know. I mean, we don't have to do this at all. I was just, I know it's an issue for people, so, and we had talked about it previous. Would you have thoughts?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there any way, there, there might be something that precludes being able to do that electronically, to be able to?
To be able to sign.
To view and/or sign. I mean, I've signed many legal documents online.
Yeah, you're not allowed to do that with town hall.
Yeah, I don't think so.
You need real signatures.
Okay, but how about the viewing?
To viewing them? I, I could discuss with town hall if there's a method that they would be okay with, but again, this is, they can always be available, we can, we can sort of save them, and you can look at them afterwards. This is just for the school committee's benefit. It's benefit.
And we can always...I mean, just because we're doing it doesn't mean we're stuck with it, right?
Correct.
We can try it, and if it doesn't work, or you're like...
Correct.
Pouring over things, you know? It would put you in a different position, I suppose. That's not gonna be great for everybody, because you could just not sign the bills, and you wouldn't ever need to worry about it, but in this scenario, that would...
I'm just afraid I'd, you know...
You'd have to vote.
For it and then not know what's actually in it.
Right. But it would pass anyway. I don't know. So knowing all of that, how does...do we want to pursue it?
I have another question that...from reading the language that was given about this, and it may affect it if we continue to do the regular signing, but it says that it can happen as often as once a month, but this seems to be...the bills happen more frequently than that.
What says ever happen once a month? What do you see?
So that it says that they, you know...
I'm sorry, what are you reading is my question.
This was the warrants for payment of bills and the language that we're basing the change policy to the one person. But it says that it can happen as often as once a month.
So that would be a problem anyway, because we do it more than once a month.
We do it, yeah.
We do it way more than once a month.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. What we had discussed is that if the committee was interested in going forward with this, we would craft a document to share formally with town hall and say, this is what we plan to do. Take another review of this. Informally, they're saying, that's what state law says. This is fine with us. But we're gonna formally say, this is how we're going to proceed. And we'll write it down and say...
And have it looked at.
Yeah, have it looked at. And if they find any issues, you know, we can make some adjustments. But again, this is not a requirement to move forward with this.
So should we just pursue it and see where we're at? Okay. So then we just need to approve the rest of the assignments? Is there a motion to approve the subcommittee appointments and assignments for next year?
A motion to approve the subcommittee assignments for next year.
I'll send a motion.
Any other discussion? Andrew?
I guess it's more of a question and that they relate to logistics. So once these are approved, then do each of the subcommittees, do they have chairs? Do we have, like, an understanding of calendar, you know, like more detail for...
Of what your work will be?
Because I think even looking at some of the other assignments, there is a difference in terms of being in an advisory capacity, being more involved in different pieces of it, and I just want to know my role.
Right. Fair enough.
I agree.
Do you want to touch on that goal?
Yeah, so there was a dream I had that with our subcommittees, that we would develop goals, and we did do that, right?
We did.
Yeah.
Evaluation did, yeah.
Actually, we do that every year with evaluation. So some of the subcommittees have developed goals. There's not...we changed it from...there's no chair for those subcommittees, so you're really all equal, but there is someone who's the spokesperson. So, you know, knowing that after you meet, when you come back to the whole meeting, that there will be one person who will speak to that.
But so no one sets an agenda?
No, the school administration...
We do.
Sets the agenda.
For the subcommittees.
Yeah. And then I think in that first subcommittee meeting, it's a really great discussion to think about what is the goal of that subcommittee and what would you like to accomplish.
And even offer input on what those agendas might look like.
So will we be notified, like, when they're meeting? Or, for example, I'm doing, you know, sick leave. Is anyone gonna kind of let you know what that is and where I go and what I do?
Yeah, and some of these meet less often.
Okay.
Maybe once a year.
So are you my person I go to?
Yeah, I get assigned to that.
Yeah, so...and I had also had a dream that we would have descriptions of what all of these were, and so I actually took a really bad attempt at writing them up and signing them on. But I think we should do the same, not just for the subcommittees, but also for those other pieces. Maybe that's work that we could do at the retreat. I mean, I don't think it would take hardly any time, just so that we can answer those questions, because I can't tell you what the sick leave bank committee does because I've never been on it, so I can't help you.
I think that this would be a good discussion for our retreat about some other aspects of these assignments, because there are different responsibilities with these assignments, and some of the representatives have much more of an active role within that board than just an advisory that's coming and reporting out information. So I think in getting a sense of kind of...
The time commitment as well.
Yeah.
Yep, hopefully, nobody ended up with too many of those.
But on each individual subcommittee, we don't make...the subcommittee doesn't make a decision. It just, like, brings back information to this. So in no form do you have to make a decision.
Right.
Right? So there's not...
Just representing mostly.
Just bringing it to the table, what you're talking about.
Sometimes you might beat down, like, the policy committee, like, tries to beat down some of that massive information. Anybody can look at anything. Once in a while, we'll go to other meetings that we're not assigned to, so...
Absolutely. So I think that's something that we should be...it's on the plate. I think we should work on better descriptions. Any other discussion?
Just making Andrew a great point. I was wondering, not to add another thing to Sharon, but I found it challenging sometimes to keep track of when the different subcommittees are meeting.
Meeting.
If you could do it as an invite, so it then goes on a calendar, that'd be huge.
Yeah, or even at the first meeting, if everybody consent...yeah.
I think that those invites would, you know, like, budget would come from Patrick's office, curriculum would come from, you know, Office of Curriculum Instruction Negotiations that will be quiet this year, policy would come out of our office, and the superintendents and valuation would come out of our office. And those...I see those as more active, because it's subcommittee work that you have...that there is work involved, as opposed to the other assignments. There's work there, but it's a different level.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be helpful, though, because I lose track of them, too.
Or even a contact person.
Yes, even just a contact.
I found the invites extremely helpful during the school start times task force, because it goes right into your calendar.
Yeah, that's nice.
It's...you can...it's just...I found the way to go.
That's great, Sonia. Okay. All in favor of the school committee subcommittee appointments and other assignments for next year?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Act to prioritize the Falmouth High School all-purpose field on the capital plan. So it is on our capital plan, but it is not a priority next year item. Patrick, who's talking on this?
I'll speak to this one just quickly. We did speak with the budget subcommittee this afternoon to put it to year one, the moving the football field and the program to the Falmouth High School site. So we just want to make sure that the school committee approves that moving forward. It will be in year one of our capital plan moving forward. The other piece, as I put in my briefing, is that there'll be another piece going on. While we're focusing on the fields, the football field moving forward, we also are looking at creating sort of a plan to address all the athletic needs on the Falmouth High School campus, and so those things will be happening at the same time. I don't know if Walter or John or anybody else on the committee would like to speak to that.
Now, I know you spoke very eloquently, Nancy. I mean, basically, that's gonna be a kind of a...this is the first phase of an approach that's gonna work in concert with the Athletic Facilities Task Force. You know, moving for...this will move forward with the field and the football program to the high school while working in concert with a task force whose charge is the complete outdoor sports facility, both in action and budget plan. With that said, I motion to put this...put the all-purpose field, the lights, and the stands on the 2018 capital budget.
Do we second?
I thought at our meeting, didn't we agree that...
Before we have a discussion, you want to second it?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, great. Go for it.
Yeah, didn't we agree, Patrick, that we would...if we could get an estimate from the field engineer, that we would say, here's our overall plan, but Phase 1 is moving the football field into an all-purpose field out here? Is that...is that the way? Sure. One of the ideas that we had is if the school committee was on board with this, is that we'd ask the engineers that had worked on this project previously to attend one of the upcoming school committee meetings, and they're open to that, to give some of our new members an update on effectively this old plan, right? And to listen to what folks want, and then they would...we would identify the project scope going forward, and they would be able to respond with what their cost proposal would be for that project scope. So we want it to be clear of what that's going to include.
And I don't...we don't need to necessarily have all those pieces worked out to move it to next year.
It's just, is this a priority or isn't?
Right.
And you guys want it to be a priority?
We do.
So that's the...
We do. And the town has sent a very clear message that it is a priority.
Yes, right. Our community and...
Right. Andrew?
So if this becomes prioritized, does something else get bumped to later? And what are the items on the capital plan that get moved?
That's a really, really good question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, that's what...we reviewed a draft capital plan today with the budget subcommittee and the FinCom representatives, and, you know, everything is a...everything's a priority. But we did confirm that roofs and boilers are always a priority. There's kind of a two-phase approach for the town in how they address capital needs. Every year, the town asks for capital requests that can be met through the November allocation, the November town meeting allocation. And in roundabout numbers, it's for...on the school side, that allocation is about $1 million. Any project, and so we're going to prioritize a number of boiler projects for that. So we are still moving forward with those things. Then the sort of the secondary capital process, it takes a little longer. You go through the April town meeting, and then if it's over $1 million, which these field projects would be over $1 million, that would require a town vote in the following May. So this is a long-term thought process there, and because in the town, in its wisdom, has sort of divided up, there's these bigger projects that require more vetting, but there's these things that need to get done for all these buildings. So it's not like we're disregarding boiler projects, for example, because the field is the only thing we want to do. But there are definitely roof projects that we want to keep our eye on, and those would be sort of in the next years of the project. So we'll be able to share that document with you. I was planning to do that at our July meeting.
And Patrick, doesn't that become a separate issue funded by the town, the field?
Correct, if the field...if the town...
If the town voted.
If the town voted for us.
But it doesn't...it doesn't mean that we don't do what we have to do on our capital plan to maintain our buildings.
Yeah, somewhat separate. Yeah, so they're parallel paths.
I think putting on a plan just gives it an emphasis of importance on our behalf.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Any other thoughts on the field? All in favor of moving the all-purpose field to the cap...higher on the capital plan for next year?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Passes unanimously. Awesome. Okay, we made it to routine business. The minutes from the May 23 meeting, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 23?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second. Any discussion, corrections, additions, changes, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Unanimous on that. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
So just quickly, I just want to speak to awards night, June 1 at Falmouth High School, which was amazing, and Alan Kazarian certainly spoke to the amount of money this community gave to our graduating seniors. It was phenomenal, and graduation went incredibly well, and that was a huge milestone for us as a district, and I was very happy with that. And then I went to the Realtors' Breakfast on June 7, and we had three seniors honored there, so that was...
I actually had some people say that they've been to dozens of graduations and that this was the best one they've ever been to. Congratulations.
It went really well.
Any questions for Nancy? Thank you. The director's reports, Sonia. I don't know what order they're all in, because mine got jumbled, so we'll start with Sonia. Anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
No, I'd be willing to answer questions.
Questions for Sonia? Thank you. Yeah, that's awesome. That's really good. Zach, anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
Not tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Your pretty pink paper. Any questions for Zach? Any question...Charlie, is there anything you'd like to highlight first?
No, no, it's all there.
Any questions for Charlie?
Any pleasure.
I had one comment. I was wondering about...or I guess it's just a comment, it's not a question. So in educating the teachers about ensuring special educators are better prepared to fulfill their roles by understanding the disabilities that they're working with, I also wondered if our teachers have had any training in trauma-informed understanding adverse childhood effects and...
They will come September.
Did I say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we're thinking about all of the pieces with the McLean Hospital.
Oh, okay.
And that is part of it.
We're weaving right into that.
Great. Oh, how kind of your voice. Any other questions for Charlie?
A question, just a comment as far as this, that, you know, whenever possible, if the special ed students can be in with the general ed kids, you know, both especially in homerooms, specials, lunch, and recess. I mean, I think they should...and I know there's a focus, but I think that's great to continue to focus.
Full inclusion is a model that we're really moving toward, and help us also to support our students with more severe disabilities and maybe part of substantially separate classrooms or programs, but yet really have them a part of that school community even more than we see now is really the goal that we're working toward.
Thank you. Cindy, anything that you'd like to highlight from your report?
No, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Cindy?
Yeah.
I just had a comment. I was glad to see that you included to the Technology Advisory Board the New York Times article, and I think that was one in a three-part series. And so there's some really interesting information that they were digging into, and I think the rest of those would be good reads as well for the Technology Advisory Board.
And we're already putting them into practice.
Looks like I'm going to be a member of that. Discussing in person.
Welcome to board.
Thank you. Thanks. Patrick, anything you want to highlight? Any other questions? Sorry, for Cindy. Patrick, anything you want to highlight?
No, it's a busy time of year, but we've got a lot going, so...
Questions for Patrick?
Any questions?
No, but an overall comment on the presentations, or the so-called presentations. When we ask for highlights, because we're televised and because it's public forum, I think it would be nice for the administrators to just give us a brief overview. Don't read it. Don't read it to us. I read this, I make notes, I underline things. I think I have a pretty good idea of what you're doing, but I think for the public perspective, just a brief overview, whether it's 30 seconds or 30 minutes, obviously, we're not gonna get to that point. Not at, what is it, 9:15 almost? But I would think that that would enhance the meeting a little bit. And then if questions arise, that's excellent, and then there's maybe a little bit of give and take, but when we say, well, do you have any highlights? Well, you know, I'll answer questions if you have them. But I just think it would be nice to just a brief overview. Very brief.
Your timing is so perfect. You're actually moving us right into the very next thing. We actually had this conversation, and it flows right into something I put in.
Do you remember whenever we were doing voting and I said, could we look at the nature of our meetings? Okay? This was one of the things. We've had times when the directors didn't even attend the meetings.
I understand that.
It ebbs and flows about it, and I was, you know...anyway, this is probably not the time to discuss this, but I think I'd be glad to head up a committee to analyze our meetings, what goes on.
And it was actually on my list to ask if anyone else wanted to help. I'm happy to help Teri do that as well. Do you want to have input on that or meet with us and talk about what the meetings should look like?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You didn't know that was gonna cause you another meeting?
Sorry. I was like, ooh, yay, he's already volunteering. He doesn't even know it. Melissa's...
Can we have it at the Seacrest?
So maybe we could just...
Don't rob them of that.
We'll set them a time that we can look at that. And definitely with input from Nancy about the best use of time for the entire team. Thank you. So a report from the chair, I have a couple things. One, I just wanted to mention that the Cape Cod Pride picnic is gonna be on the 24th of Saturday, 24th of June, this Saturday, from 12 to 3, and one of our school grounds is lucky enough to host, it's over at Morse Pond. And I heard it was awesome last year, so I missed it, and I was, you know, had that fear of missing whatever that thing is that the kids say, so I'm going this year. I also wanted to ask if anyone or everyone could send items that they want to do with the retreat agenda, topics for the retreat that you think would be helpful for us to discuss or talk about at that meeting, which is less formal. We don't make any decisions, but it's an opportunity for us to talk about stuff that affects how we meet all year and what we want to talk about, what we want to meet on. And that's all I had. Any other reports from other committees? I can't imagine anybody had a chance to meet since we...you had something.
Well, no, I just know that we are meeting for our first evaluation subcommittee meeting this summer.
Yes, we are.
So did we just determine a date?
We didn't, but we said we were gonna set a date in the summer.
So we needed to determine that, so...
So we'll do that online. Not now. Because we still have more due. Any requests for follow-up information?
I did ask about that information, about looking at the year before for the medical...
Medical year.
Oh, you wanted the three years.
So then we can think of budget-wise how that...
Yeah. Yep, thank you. Great. Teri?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. The inspector of the school committee will not prepare a public session.
Roll call vote. Walter?
Nope. Somebody's gotta second it.
Oh, sorry. Oh, thanks, John. Sorry. Thank you, guys. You know, I'm gonna mess up a lot, so bear with me.
A gamble.
I know, the gamble. Walter, roll call vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
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 I don't know what I do. What do I do? Merger? Okay. Do I get to do that? Good job.
All right.
We made it.